All right, good afternoon, everyone. We're going to get started with today's policy session of the Phoenix City Council. Thanks, everyone, for being here. We have only two items, but they are meaty items on our agendas where you can get right to business. I'm going to request that we forego council information and follow requests until after the item on the proposed city of Phoenix ethics policy is debated and voted upon. I will ask the vice mayor if he has a call for an executive session. My understanding there's no consent agenda, so call for an executive session.
Mayor, in accordance with a properly posted notice and agenda, I move that the city council pursuant to Arizona revised statute section 38-431.02.A. Meet in executive session on Tuesday, February 23rd, 2016, at 1:00 p.m. in the East Conference Room, 12th floor, Phoenix City Hall, 200 West Washington Street, Phoenix, Arizona. And on Tuesday, March 1st, 2016, at 1:00 p.m. in the East Conference Room, 12th floor, Phoenix City Hall, 200 West Washington Street, Phoenix, Arizona.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, that item passes unanimously. Mr. City Manager, do you have any short reports or budget updates? So we're going to move on to the meat of our agenda. We have two items on the agenda. First is a state legislative update, and second is the ethics policy. I'm going to ask for a little bit of indulgence that we're going to do one item on the state legislative update first, and then take a vote to see if this council will support that item, which has to do with the proposed public safety pension reform effort led by Representative Lesko. And then after that, we'll move to the ethics policy, and then when the ethics policy is completed, then we'll go back and complete our legislative agenda. Does anyone disagree with that approach, how we move forward today? So I know Tom Remus, who's the head of our intergovernmental team, will give a more formative induction, but I do want to say thank you to Representative Lesko for being here today and hearing the -- providing not only for this council, but for the public of Phoenix, watching the details of the proposed PSPRS reform effort that you've been leading for more than a year. I can't imagine the hundreds of hours that you've put in bringing disparate parties together for this reform proposal. Brian Jeffries, representing the professional firefighters of Arizona, is here as well. Our former colleague here on the city council, as well as Will Bouvetas, representing Phoenix Law Enforcement Association, who are all at the table during this process. And I think I'll let you talk, maybe shortly, about the politics and how you were able to bring everyone together, and then the substance of it. But it is a rare thing, when you have a press conference, and both Jim Waring and myself show up. That's a pretty impressive thing. I'll say that, just as an initial note.
And what did we wind up talking about afterwards? Satan. Very fitting. It's true. That's what we wanted to talk about.
So I'll hand it over to Tom Remus, head of our intergovernmental team, and then we'll hear from Representative Lesko, and then from Brian and Will, and then we'll see if there's a motion and discussion in the city council, and see if we can't get support for this important effort. Tom?
Mayor, council members, thank you so much. Mayor, you kicked it off. We are so happy to have Senator Lesko here today to tell us about her.
Real quick, I am so sorry that I identified you with the, obviously, the lower house. Senator Lesko, my apologies, yes. Thank you for your leadership. My apologies.
So today, we have the three PSPRS reform bills we're asking for your direction on. We're recommending support of those bills. And as you mentioned, Mayor, I think if we could have Senator Lesko share with us the highlights of those bills, the process that she went through to get there with a number of stakeholders, including public safety stakeholders, the League, the Reason Foundation, and many others. And with that, Senator, I know you have to get back to the important business at the Senate, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having me here. It's a wonderful venue. I kind of like it over here.
Spend more time with us, come on.
Anyway, yes, as you've said, we've been working on this for about a year now. And with the help of the professional firefighters of Arizona, and the various different police associations, and law enforcement associations throughout the state, and the Reason Foundation, which is a libertarian think tank which helped with actuaries, we got it done. And at the first meeting, I didn't know how far we were going to get, and I told people that I think we're going to get this done. People were a little bit doubtful at the time. And a few months ago, I told the governor that I think we're going to get this done, and I think we're going to get a unanimous vote. And again, some laughs and chuckles, like, sure, Debbie. But here we are. It passed out of the Senate unanimously. Last night, it was assigned to a House committee, which will be hearing it tomorrow morning at 8:30 in the morning. And I am very hopeful that it will pass out of the House unanimously. And I just want to briefly tell you what it's all about, so that you know what you're voting on. You have a handout. Each of you have a handout. Basically, number one, there will be a ballot measure portion of it, and that's because it affects current employees and retirees. The goal is to put it on the May ballot. It changes the pension benefit increase structure for retirees. All stakeholders have said that the current payout structure is unsustainable. The status quo is there's a 4% compounded increase that has been paid out for the last 20-plus years regardless of the fund's financial status. The payout is unpredictable based on investment rate of return, and until 2014, PSPRS did not include this cost in the normal cost of the fund. The fund is depleted. There was no PBI payments last year, and will be no payments this year. We're changing the structure to an actual cost of living adjustment based on the regional consumer price index with a cap of 2%. The advantage is the status quo is unsustainable and is creating a huge debt. And then all the rest of these apply to new hires. Did you want me to go through all of these, or have you been briefed on this before? I don't want to bore you.
We'll make it as briefly as possible, because not only are you briefing the members of this council, but you're briefing the citizens of Phoenix who are watching on television. It's important that they know what's in the bill.
Wonderful. So number two applies to new hires only, and the old plan will stay open, thus there's no added cost to close out a plan. The status quo is we currently have tier one and tier two employees exist depending on when they were hired. The change is we're adding tier three for new hires. The advantage is we're adding a new tier which allows reforms going forward without the cost of entirely closing out the old plan. Number three, there will be a 50/50 employer/employee contribution payment into the pension fund. The status quo is employees pay a maximum of 11.65% of their salary into their pension fund. Employers, as you know, are not capped. For example, Prescott pays approximately 80% of their employee's salary towards their pension. Phoenix, I'm told, is approximately 50%. Thus, in Phoenix, if a police officer is hired at $60,000 a year, Phoenix pays $90,000 a year just for the salary and the pension. We're changing it so that employers and employees split the cost of the pension 50/50, just like we already do in the Arizona State Retirement System. The advantage is both employers and employees have equal skin in the game, and board decisions will affect both groups equally. Employers will immediately save money on every new hire, ranging from approximately 2.7% to 5.6% of that person's salary. The risk to employers, which is taxpayers, is decreased, and the contribution rates will be less volatile. Number four, pensionable pay cap. The status quo is $265,000. We're changing it to $110,000 a year. So an employee's pension pay will be based on a maximum salary of $110,000 a year. The $110,000 will be adjusted based on actual average salary increases. The advantage is it limits pension spiking. Number five, on page two, minimum benefit eligibility age. Again, all these apply just to new hires, only number one was for existing employees. The status quo is there's no minimum age for tier one employees, and it's 52 and a half years old for tier two employees. The change is a minimum 55 years old, or 52 and a half years with actuarially reduced benefit. Note, an employee can retire prior to 55 years old, but is not eligible for benefit payments until they're 55 years old. The advantage is this reduces costs and helps the fund actuarially. Number six, minimum years of service required. Status quo, 20 years of service for tier one employees, and 25 years of service for tier two employees. The reform is that there will be a full benefit at 25 years of service for new tier three employees, a reduced benefit at 15 years of service. Number seven, there will be 100% defined contribution option. The status quo is this is not currently available. The change is new hires will be allowed to choose between the defined benefit option and 100% defined contribution option within the first 90 days of hire. Employer and employee contributions are mandated at 50/50% of their normal cost of the pension. Funds will be managed professionally, and withdrawals on loans will not be allowed for boats, et cetera, prior to retirement. The advantage is this increases portability of retirement funds for the employee. The employee can give their retirement benefits to any beneficiary instead of the status quo that limits benefit payments to surviving spouses or minor or disabled adult children. It also allows employers to hire older, more experienced workers, and not force them to pay into a defined benefit retirement plan that they will not benefit from, and the employer risk is decreased. Number eight, multiplier rate change. The status quo is 2.5%. Thus, if someone retires with an average salary of $100,000, the per-year pension payment would be $100,000 times 2.5% times the number of years of service. The change is a step multiplier. 2.5% for 25 years of service, 2.25 for 22 years of service, 2% for 19 years of service, 1.75% for 17 years of service, and 1.5% for 15 years of service. The advantage is it reduces the cost and helps the fund actuarially. Number nine, defined contribution hybrid component for employees that do not receive social security. The status quo is there is no defined contribution option. Some employees, mostly firefighters, do not currently pay into or receive social security benefits. Thus, there is a disparity in benefits among similar employees. The change, for employees that do not receive social security, the employer will match employee 3% contribution into a defined contribution plan. The employee can contribute in excess of the 3% up to the IRS limit. The advantage, this will help employees without social security benefits save for retirement and make their retirement savings more equitable to employees that do receive social security. Number 10, governance changes, which will provide more accountability and transparency for the PSPRS fund. Status quo is there's a seven-member PSPRS board. The change is to a nine-member PSPRS board, and also a 10-member advisory council. There will be more PSPRS reporting and accountability, along with incorporating comprehensive fiduciary standards and statutes. And this was something that was very important to the League of Cities and Towns, and we also included in this legislation, which is not written here, is that there will be a study that is due in about a year, and if we should pool and have one big fund instead of the 256 different local boards, or if we should have one fund, less boards than 256, if we should do it regionally or not. That's a study committee. They'll report back to the legislature, and then we'll decide what we do from there. Number 11, who is in support of this legislation so far? Well, the governor's office, the League of Cities and Towns, the County Supervisors Association, the Professional Firefighters of Arizona, the Phoenix Law Enforcement Association, the Fraternal Order of Police State Lodge, the PSPRS board itself voted to support the ballot measure portion, the Arizona Association of Counties, the Arizona Chamber of Commerce, and the Greater Phoenix Chamber of Commerce. So with that, I hopefully you understand it. If you have any questions, I'm willing to answer them for you. I do have to get back to an appropriations committee meeting where I'm supposed to be voting on bills and how we're going to spend money.
Senator will make our comments as brief as possible. I would just repeat what I said at the press conference, which is, this is exactly the way legislating should occur. You brought everyone to the table, you gave everyone enough time to get their issues on the table, so you didn't start this two weeks before it was due. You started a year in advance. You made sure that all the appropriate parties were represented. This is legislative heavy lifting. These are meaty changes that are being proposed, and to do it in a way where all of the disparate sides have come together, and in a spirit of compromise have come together, this is exactly the way it should be done, and I admire your leadership on this issue. And I can say, without a doubt, no city in the state of Arizona will benefit more from this reform, both when it passes the legislature and when it goes to the voters and passes by the people of the state of Arizona. No city in the state of Arizona will benefit more than the city of Phoenix because of the size of our public safety personnel forces, both police and fire. So we owe you a huge debt of gratitude for putting in the huge amount of time that you have done, and I will see in a moment whether there is a motion in favor or not, because when Phoenix supports this, we want you to move right ahead of the governor's office on your list of supporters of this. I'm just joking, you don't have to do that. But thank you for your leadership, and I know other members of council have a chance to say anything in just a moment, but I also wanted to address particularly professional firefighters of Arizona and Phoenix Law Enforcement Association, who did not have to come to the table, did not have to agree to the sacrifices that will inevitably involve their members, not just new members, but their existing members. And I know not every single one of your members is probably ecstatic about the proposed changes, but that's what leadership involves. So Brian, to you and to Will, we owe you a huge debt of gratitude, because without the willingness of you to step up and be leaders, this could not have occurred, and this will not be easy. And there will be some opposition as a result of this, but we owe you a huge debt of gratitude representing, obviously, our police officers and firefighters. Thank you for stepping up and doing what you did. And I would just see, Brian and Will, do you have any short comments that we can let the Senator to get back to her great work at the legislature? Any short comments as to the proposed PSPRS reform?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of council. It's so great to see you all. I just want to make a few quick points. First of all, as you mentioned, Mayor, everybody in the totality of our pension system is affected by this, and we look at that as an important element, that everybody is going to make some sacrifices to really help ourselves out of this situation. Number two, we spent a great deal of time analyzing the legalities of this. Nobody knows better than the city of Phoenix of the challenges that you face when amending pension systems. We really spent a lot of time, and frankly, a lot of money, on attorneys to make sure that this thing is well inoculated from legal challenge, can't prevent legal challenges, but to try to inoculate yourself, we can. Furthermore, this thing will eventually, if we're successful, appear before the citizens of Phoenix, so I appeal to you and to them that your comments are so important, because we were at the table, we are part of this. It does provide stability for the system, which is incredibly important. It also provides confidence in our police officers and firefighters that they don't have to spend a lot of time thinking about their futures. Their futures will be secure with this new program, so thank you for giving us the time today.
Thank you, President Jeffries, for your leadership. Will Bouvetas from PLE.
Mayor, members of the council, I'd just like to make a couple of comments. First off, when you see the 50/50 split for the new employees, I know that the city of Phoenix went through that a couple of years ago. This plan's designed a little bit differently. They're only going to be paying the liabilities and assets of their own tier. So the unfunded liability that's already occurred, accrued, that's a debt that's got to be paid, but it's not going to be passed on to the new employee. So they won't be paying, you know, like 20%, 20%, as was the case with the pension reform a few years ago. The other thing I'd just like to add, it's been a really a great experience. I mean, if you would have told me a year ago that you'd bring us and the firefighters and the Republicans, Democrats, the chamber, the League of Cities, the counties, the Reason Foundation, all together into an agreement, I would have told you you were nuts. But it was a great experience. I mean, the first couple of meetings were a little rough, I think, you know, a lot of it was posturing, but once we got rid of that, and people realized, hey, we got a problem, we got to find a solution, everybody worked tremendously together to get us to this point, and this is a good deal for the cops, for the firefighters, and for the taxpayers. And you're right, I don't see Councilman Waring and you at press conferences very often together, so we must have done something right to get you guys both there together.
We were even dressed alike. It was very here. I thank you very much.
So we were in full support of this plan, and I think it's the right thing to do for the city of Phoenix.
Thank you. I'll hand it to the vice mayor, see if we have a motion in a second, and then any comments, members of the council, and then we'll take a vote, and you get back to your great work at the legislature. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, my motion is to support this plan on behalf of the city of Phoenix. Obviously, there's more work to be done. Senator Lesko, thank you so much for your leadership. And also, again, I want to echo the comments that were made by you, Mayor, to President Brian Jeffries from PFFA, and of course, Will Bouvetas, representing PLE and the APA, the Arizona Police Association. We also have Steve Burline, the president of Local 493, Tim Hill, the vice president, Brian Willingham. There are so many people that were engaged and involved, and many of them are not here. And those are the firefighters and the police officers that are out there, not only throughout the city of Phoenix, but, you know, as a first responder myself, it's a very personal topic here, because I have this responsibility, and I thank God for it. I have this responsibility to help govern this city, and someone who's helped, along with a couple of my colleagues, helped lead the pension reform efforts for the city of Phoenix. And this is something that we've been calling on for a long time, represent the city of Phoenix with the League of Cities and Towns. Senator Lesko, we were just talking just briefly a few moments ago on how this is going to impact everyone, all of us throughout the entire state, and you know what? It's going to impact me personally as a current member, which is the right thing to do. You know, Brian and Will, this is the right thing to do. Obviously, it's always been about, you know, leadership. So this is a step in the right direction. I absolutely support, and my motion is to, this is a support staff recommendation.
So the recommendation is to support A, B, and C, because there's three elements to the proposed PSPRS reform. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, and I'll turn it to other members of the council. Any comments you'd like to make? Councilman Williams, do you have a comment?
Well, I want to congratulate you, and thank you, all of you, for taking the time and the effort to solve this tremendous problem for us. We knew a few years ago we were in trouble. The results, I'm very proud of all of you working together to find a solution. Now I have to ask staff a question. Do I have a conflict of interest? My husband's a retired police officer.
Ms. Brad Holmes, so she is a member of PSPRS through her husband. Does that create a conflict of interest on a vote potentially supporting the proposed PSPRS reform?
I want to support it, but I don't want to do anything to jeopardize it.
You know, that question turns on Mayor, Councilwoman Williams, whether or not you have a pecuniary interest in the outcome. So pecuniary interest is whether or not you have any kind of benefits that flow to you. If you do, out of an abundance of caution, you might consider declaring a conflict.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Councilman Gates, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Congratulations, everyone. I would agree with all the comments that have been made by my colleagues. Not only is this the way that things should be done in Arizona, this is a national model to have everyone come together like this, to take on an issue. And just to be very clear, there is no bigger issue for us in the city of Phoenix from a fiscal perspective right now. So thank you already, what all of you have done, and I am proud to support this and wish you the very best as this moves forward, but it's something that's never been done before. So thank you, especially to my former colleague. Thank you so much for your leadership on this, and to see the unions working together, it's really very inspiring. So thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much, councilman. Councilman Pastore?
Senator Lesko, I really like to congratulate you to reach, getting to this point, understanding the hard work, especially as I look at you right now, there are four men around you, but I'm sure there were a lot more in the room that you had to settle down after a while, and so I congratulate you for that, and being able to get to where we needed to get to, and having the patience and the guidance and your leadership, being there to be able to sail the ship. So I really appreciate it, because this does mean a lot to the gentlemen that are sitting there. You know that we needed to get there, and we were all worried and concerned in the sense of how we were going to get there, and all the gentlemen sitting in the audience, too. All of you knew we had to do something, and so thank you for all the hard work, because it does take a lot of time, and it takes a lot of strategy and reading things, and how do we write it and do it, but appreciate all the hard work, and so I am definitely very supportive of this. It's going to help many cities, not just our city, but many cities and towns that are affected by this. So I appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you very much. Councilman Gago?
I also want to thank Councilman Waring, whose idea it was to bring the folks who are here today to talk about this important issue. So I think it's great that we can get a great view into the work you are doing and look forward to supporting it. It was wonderful to see such a collaborative approach, people working together to produce a great solution. I'm confident that the voters within Phoenix will support it. They have supported many similar policy changes that we made with our COPERS system, which was something that many people in this room have worked long and hard on. Thank you to Mayor Stanton for his leadership on that with Seth Scott, and I think it drove Rick Neymark into retirement, but we had a lot of great people at the city of Phoenix who looked at very similar measures, and we know that they're working for us already, and I'm confident they will work for the state.
Councilman Nowakowski?
Thank you, Mayor. Senator, thank you so much, and Brian, and Will, I just really want to thank all the men and women in uniform, but one thing that I learned from our pension reform is education, taking time to really talk to the members of your union and educating them, because this is scary. I mean, when you hear stuff on the news and all the different changes, and people get scared. So I think that if you can create some type of education component, where you sit down with the men and women that serve this great state of ours, and to let them understand what's going on, and how we're basically really saving our fire departments and our police departments throughout the whole state of Arizona, and also thank you for finding that common ground, because I know it's hard when you get a lot of leaders in a room and to try to find that common ground, and it looks like you found that common ground. And thank you, Senator, and thank you, too, for the leadership that you provided in providing this outlet for us. Thank you.
Councilman Waring, a quick question?
I do. What you did was very hard. You got, I think, 30 cosponsors in the Senate, which is sort of, I don't know if it's unprecedented, but it's hard to do, 39 in the House. There is a deadline, though, to get it on the May ballot, right? Is it February 15th? So that's looking promising, I assume?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilman Waring. Yes, it's going to, it was first read last night in the House, is assigned to the House Insurance Committee, and will be heard tomorrow morning at 8:30. And I'm very hopeful that then it will be voted out of the House by the end of this week, so that we will meet that deadline to get it on the May ballot.
And I think that's fantastic. There was some discussion at the press conference that Mayor Stanton mentioned. Nobody's saying this is perfect or will solve every problem, but with this many stakeholders in the room, it's amazing, as has been suggested, too, that anything got done, particularly something with this much heft and real changes in it. So while I understood the questions at the press conference, I would also push back and say, I'd like to see anybody else do better. I don't think they could have under these circumstances, so you're to be applauded for that. Just for the city manager, obviously, this has been a big issue for us. I think this year, just doing the numbers in my head, I think it's about 122 million of our general fund, and about three or four years, it's 197 is our projections. But this doesn't reduce the 197 back to something, it slows the rate of growth, correct? I know you haven't got that numbers, and maybe you could also tell me when you think you'll have the actual numbers of what this can do.
Mayor, Councilman Waring, yes, the pension reform takes a long period of time to take effect, but you have to start at some point, and so it's important to start as soon as you can, which is why we're so encouraged with this. We don't think it will necessarily bring down our liability, but it will stop the rate of growth, and that in itself is very important for our budget. We will have our estimate of the future probably no later than the trial budget in March.
And you and I have talked about this, so I think I know the answer. Is there a bigger issue Phoenix is dealing with than this?
No.
From budget?
Budgetarily, yes, thank you.
But I mean, it's huge dollars when you look at 70 million dollar increase.
Speaking in terms of our budget, the pension is our biggest single item to deal with.
I think it's fair to say that, assuming this passes, and I believe it will, it will have the same positive impact on our budget that COPERS reform that we've undertaken has had, already has, and will continue to have an increasingly more positive impact on our general fund budget.
Mayor, that's correct.
Any other comments or questions? So we have a motion on the table, we have a second. Mike Huckins from Greater Phoenix Chamber of Commerce, do you wish to testify or just register your support, your list? your support, you're listed on the chart as the organization's supporting it already. Great to see you.
Mayor, I'm declaring a conflict.
Well, oh, I'm sorry, and Vice Mayor Valenzuela, who has a similar potential conflict, but has done the legal research, and I think is taking a different approach. I don't want to create awkwardness here, but I want to speak for himself.
I do appreciate that. I did do some research. There are more than ten people represented by this bargaining unit, and I am a member of the PFFA, Local 493, far more than ten people. I am within the right to vote, and I absolutely will be voting for this.
Okay. And then, each council member can make their own decision about whether they participate in the vote or not. So, with that, I just want to say one more thing, that with Brian Jeffries sitting at the table, it is proof for all of you that there is good things after Phoenix City Council. Life is not over after you've served on the Phoenix City Council. All right. With that, roll call.
Councilwoman Gallego?
Yes.
Councilman Gates?
Yes.
Councilman Nowakowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pastore? Councilman Waring?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Valenzuela?
Yes.
Mayor Stanton?
Yes, the item passes unanimously. Senator Lesko, thank you very much for your leadership, and I know you have to go back to the legislature, but we look for, we can't talk about politics here at this meeting, but we look forward to working with you on a successful strategy at the ballot box.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so much. All right. As we talked about earlier, the next item on the agenda will be the ethics policy, and then afterwards, we'll go back with the remainder of our proposed state legislative package. So, we're going to move on to item number three. My request, as our professional city staff come forward to present the proposed ethics policy that has been in front of the City of Phoenix Public Safety and Ethics Subcommittee, is that we give them a chance to go through the entire proposed policy, but then we'll come back and break it down into four or five sections, and then we'll see if there are individual, how many, eight? Eight sections, and see if there are individual motions on this section, on the individual section. So, my request is, I know there'll be questions, members of the council, and there should be, first let our professional city staff go through all of the proposals, and then we'll go down and break it into its component parts, we can have a more meatier discussion at that time. So, with that, our deputy city manager, Mr. Paul Blue, with a discussion of our proposed City of Phoenix, new City of Phoenix ethics policy.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm here today with Dan Brown, chief assistant counsel from the Law Department, to talk to you about the ethics policy, both historically and where we are at of the moment. And so, for the purposes of history, the last major update for the ethics policy was in two thousand and six. The current policy addresses conflicts of interest and ethical standards of conduct as found in the city charter in Chapter eleven and in the city code. The mayor and council in two thousand and twelve appointed a task force to study ethics and update it with best practices. It was made up of external members, and they reported their recommendations in January of thirteen. The key areas they chose to address after their study was gifts and an updated inquiry process for the mayor and council, as well as board and commission members. The city council considered policy options in two thousand and thirteen, and then in April of fourteen, they referred the topic to the Public Safety and Veterans Subcommittee for further work and review. This subcommittee considered it on six separate dates across the timeframe you see listed there. And at the request of the Public Safety and Veterans Subcommittee, staff drafted ordinance text based upon the subcommittee's policy recommendations. The draft text was considered in April and September of two thousand and fifteen, and in September of fifteen, the subcommittee recommended that staff should request feedback from stakeholders, which included board and commission members, employee groups, and the business community, and that when that feedback was assembled, forward the draft ordinance text and that feedback to the full city council. And we're here today following through on that request. At the view from a thousand feet, we're going to walk through, as the mayor described, these subject areas, but at the view from a thousand feet, this ordinance, this draft ordinance for discussion today addresses the following: the appearance of undue influence or conflicts of interest, ethical conduct, gifts, the inquiry process for elected officials and board and commission members. It also provides that if state law requires a different venue or agency to review a matter, if a issue is raised of an ethical concern, that matter would then be referred to that appropriate agency as required by law. Let me provide an example of that. In the case of campaign finance, the state law provides for four, dependent upon the issue, four different venues or parties who are to consider the matter. They include the filing officer, which for the, in the case of the city, is the city clerk, the county attorney, the attorney general, or the secretary of state. And so, were an ethical concern raised and sent to the Public Safety and Veterans Subcommittee on campaign finance, it would be referred to as appropriate one of these four groups that I described. So, with that as a backdrop and a setting, the first category is who does the ordinance apply to? And this is broadly what is already in city code today, and the draft ordinance for discussion today includes all of those that you see listed, of elected officials, board and commission members, city employees, and volunteers who work with elected officials or in the offices of executive management. It does not include block watch participants. As a new item, we have the definition of a gift, and it is in two components, and it is direct or indirect compensation, so it is an item that is, has a value, some type of financial benefit, like an honorarium for a speaking engagement. And it is above and beyond the normal compensation provided by the city for the position that the individual holds. What is all, what is new also is the definition of what is not a gift, and the draft ordinance references outside employment, campaign contributions, gifts from a relative or partner, whether there's an award or personalized plaque acknowledging someone's service in their official capacity, admission, travel, or food as part of an individual's official capacity, working on behalf of the city, and then gifts that are received by a relative or partner who is an elected official. New is prohibited gifts, and prohibited gifts are those that create the appearance of undue influence or conflict of interest, and regardless of value, whether de minimis or much, they are prohibited under the draft ordinance. Also new are disclosure requirements. And so, gifts valued at fifty dollars and under are proposed to not require disclosure. Those valued over fifty dollars or with an unknown value are to be disclosed. A form filed with the city clerk would, is currently proposed to occur within thirty days of receipt of the gift. The clerk will post the forms on the website, and the forms for elected officials will be retained for three years after leaving office, and for employees, five years after disclosure. Currently, there is, in this section in six A relates to employees and volunteers, and the ordinance contemplates what is currently a charter provision, which is that the city manager will manage the review of concerns or questions, and the city manager or designee would conduct the inquiry, and any discipline would be determined and applied by the city manager. New, related to elected officials and board and commission members, is an updated inquiry process. And so, any resident or affected party may file questions or issues with the city clerk. An inquiry about that would be placed on the next agenda of the Public Safety and Veterans Subcommittee, or in the event it's regarding a member of that Subcommittee, another Subcommittee picked at random. Third, the Subcommittee may, with a vote of three members, dismiss the inquiry or proceed with an inquiry, and if the Subcommittee proceeds with an inquiry and after findings, may dismiss the inquiry or may make recommendations to the full city council. If the, if there is, if there aren't three votes for any action, the inquiry is deemed closed. The ordinance contemplates that the Subcommittee may use a fact finder to support the inquiry. The fact finder is selected by the Subcommittee from a qualified vendors list that is produced annually by the Law Department, and the scope of work of the fact finder would be determined by the Subcommittee. Outcomes after a city council hearing, the city council members, as it relates to issues raised about a city council member, the city council may dismiss the inquiry, issue a censure, or provide for up to a five-hundred-dollar fine. In the event it's a board and commission member, the city council may dismiss the inquiry, censure, or provide up to a five-hundred-dollar fine, and/or provide for removal from their position as a board and commission member. That provision already exists inside of city code today. Seven votes of the city council are required to take any action under the ordinance, as currently proposed, and if there are less than seven votes for any action, the inquiry is deemed closed. Effective dates, which are an important part of trying to articulate what the expectations are going forward, there was a contemplated date when this was first originally heard by the Subcommittee in September. It is obviously up to the city council to determine what, if any, what is the date they would wish to proceed forward at this point. And with that, Mayor and council staff is prepared to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Thank you very much, and thanks, everyone, for having the patience to allow Paul to go through the entire proposal that's been before the Public Safety Subcommittee, and that's the posture that we're coming, is moving forward from the Public Safety Subcommittee. So, now, I'll turn to members of the council, if they have either questions on the overall policy and/or a motion, again, we'll do it section by section, and so, as a motion is made on a particular section, we'll hopefully put it up on the board. Councilman Nowakowski, Chair of Public Safety Subcommittee.
You know, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, then we can discuss the motion if it's second or not. I'd like to move that the direction of staff to incorporate the Public Safety and Veterans Subcommittee's version of Section One in the final ordinance.
All right. I'll second that, I'll second that motion. So, the request by the Public Safety Subcommittee Chair is that, at least as it relates to Section One, who the ordinance applies to, his motion is that we incorporate, that we fully incorporate what came out of the Subcommittee. Councilman Waring?
So, does that mean, this is a technical question, so does that mean we can only ask questions about Section One?
I
Because some of them work together.
That is absolutely a fair question, and I would suggest that, in light of the uniqueness in which we're operating, we're trying to take a very meaty proposal and break it down as components parts, we can have, but if you have questions that
Which is not a bad idea.
Part of Section One, but incorporate other parts, you're certainly welcome to do so. Go ahead.
So, so, and, and I don't know, oh, it's this one. Okay. So, I'm looking at the handwritten notes, or the, excuse me, the handout you gave us of the same thing. So, D, the volunteers. So, is this, we're including interns in this? I mean, I've had interns from out of the country. It just seems like they're going to be filing reports. It seemed to indicate no further down, but is that how I'm reading this? Who's ever going to volunteer?
Mayor, Councilman Waring, the proposal, as it came from the Public Safety and Veterans Subcommittee, was that those individuals who work closely or in close proximity to elected officials or in the executive offices of management of the city are in a position to influence policy, and the judgment was that they are, that this applies to them.
I'll give you an example. So, I have a volunteer, this hasn't happened to my knowledge, by the way, but, but I have a volunteer who is in my office, who's an intern, and their father is a zoning attorney, and their father gives them a Christmas present. Ethical violation? The fact that you have to ask the lawyer is a little concerning, right there.
Mayor, Councilmember Waring, no, it is not, because, again, it's a gift from a relative, and that's expressly excluded, so it would not be a violation.
I guess I'm just a little, we're fair game, because we're up here, but, but the volunteers, that just, that seems a little odd that you are including them. I was surprised to see this here.
Mayor, Councilman Waring, it is entirely the council's prerogative as to who this applies to. This was an issue that, from the beginning with the original task force, was a question they raised, and so, staff is, and I'm sorry, Dan, did you want to add?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Waring, the big concern with volunteers happens to be with planning and zoning officers. Those are volunteers at the time, many of them are paid. There are a number of individuals that serve in important decision and advisory capacity, and so, that was the main focus previously with both the task force and the prior ordinance, proposed ordinance that was brought before this body.
I think a key issue, obviously, is who will be required to disclose to, the disclosure requirements to the city clerk? My understanding is, as we get to Section Five, which deals with the gift disclosure requirements, the Chair of Public Safety may have some, may have some ideas that would impact volunteers in particular, so that may lessen the burden of disclosure on volunteers, but they would still have to obey the overall ethics policies of the city as it relates to conflicts of interest and not accepting inappropriate gifts from non-relatives, et cetera.
I guess, I was aware of Section Five, so I think I alluded to that when I started. There was a comment, so I read through these comments you guys provided, you sent these out, this out to the villages, I guess. I guess I don't want to read this whole thing, but, but one of the village planning members brought up a scenario not entirely different from the one I just mentioned. If you want to include them, I guess that's fine. I hope it doesn't have a chilling effect on people volunteering. The flip side is that if they're not going to report, why are we including them, because they're never going to get caught? I mean, what's the sanction? There's no report, they're not signing anything.
Mayor, Councilman Waring, again, as the prerogative of the city council, if there are adjustments that are made, staff is bringing forward the direction from the Public Safety and Veterans Subcommittee. And this was where we began, and I believe the notion was that there are a variety of capacities for individuals who are not necessarily city employees who work in the office, there's a variety of arrangements for how individuals come to work in, whether in an elected official's office or in an executive's office elsewhere in the city. Volunteer is kind of the broad substitute for all of those. When we bring the precise ordinance text, you know, which we provided, at least in draft, it was really intended to provide an encompassing representation of all who work in and around the elected officials and executive management who are contributors to the public policy debate.
And, and let the record reflect, I'm not a volunteer, so I don't have, just get in the game here, so, it's fine. It just, it did catch my attention, and then we're not having a report, so why is this even included? I thought the fellow on page ten of your report brought up a fairly valid point that might impact some of the folks that have been, you guys can all read it and decide if you think it might impact some of the people you've appointed to different committees, potentially. I mean, it wasn't anything, he's not suggesting anything ridiculous, he's just saying, you know, my normal course of business, people exchange gifts and so forth, I don't always know what they do, I'm loosely summarizing, it's a rather lengthy piece. But if everybody's comfortable with it, I guess I am, too. On campaign finance, you mentioned, that's a good thing, because the city clerk deals with that with us, right? So, all those complaints, everything goes to the city clerk. What about, hate to even say this, wouldn't apply to me, but I'm not saying it would apply to anybody here, but when I was at the legislature, people got DUIs, so they committed a crime. So, that gets sent to the police. Is that an ethics violation, too, or how would we deal with that? How would that be?
So, Mayor, Councilman Waring, I'll let Dan get into the precise details of the law, but as described in the ordinance, when there is an issue that is raised, where there is a separate review and action by a different branch of government or a different party found in state law for, that is, hears or considers those issues, even if an inquiry is brought forward, the ordinance provides that we should not advance that forward, and it should be deferred to, to the other body who is required under law to hear that item and stand down until that item is brought to its natural conclusion.
So, Dan, shall we answer the question? For a DUI, is that a potential So, Dan, short answer to the question, for a DUI, is that a potential ethics complaint under this rule?
Mayor, Councilmember Waring, what would happen with DUI or any other-
Really, any other criminal, I'm just using that one, that's the most likely.
Any, any other, actually, not just necessarily criminal, but, but civil potential violation of a law, that would be referred to the proper authority. So, for example, if it's a felony, or DUI, because a DUI can be both a felony or a misdemeanor, so if it's a felony, it would be referred to the county attorney's office. If it's a misdemeanor, it would be referred to the city prosecutor, but, for example, if it involved any of you, the city prosecutor would have a conflict, and we have rules of working through that conflict, and would probably be referred to another agency that prosecutes misdemeanors.
But as a short answer, this proposed ethics policy does not affect a DUI situation, the specific question that Councilman Waring asked.
That, that's correct.
Or any, I meant any kind of misdemeanor-type crime. I mean, they're also, if it's a big, you know, there are, you could recall someone, obviously, they could use their election and so forth. Again, I'm not implying anybody here that's going to happen, it's just, are we also going to be sitting in judgment on that? And it sounds like no. The short answer is no.
Correct.
There are a lot of words to get to no, but the answer was no. All right, thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions on Section 1, which is just, who would this apply to? Again, you know, not getting, we don't get ahead too much, but I think this Chair of Public Safety Subcommittee may propose some changes as it relates to disclosure requirements for volunteers. Councilman Gates.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question on, this is under 7, so this is 7 under definitions, and it's the exclusions, and so I'm wondering about 7E. This is admission, food, beverage, so this is something that's excluded from the disclosure requirement. Admission, food, beverages, transportation, accommodations received by an elected official in their official capacity as a representative of the city related to city business, which does not create a conflict of interest. So what, what does that entail? What is covered within that exclusion?
Can I ask one question? Where, well, you said 7E, that's not, okay, so, in the future, if you're going to do this kind of handout, it'd be good to have it well before this meeting, because it references all this different stuff, and now I don't know where we are.
I think 7E was in the proposed ordinance itself, as opposed to the PowerPoint, so that you have to-
Sorry, yeah, I'm reading, I'm reading from the ordinance.
Right.
From the proposed ordinance. So it's gift, it's getting into the different exclusions.
Either Dan or-
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Gates, that particular exclusion applies to professional associations, so if you look at the definitions, it also includes a definition for what city business involves. So it's detailed as to, it limits the particular items, but so, for example, if aviation, aviation employee is, is paid in part with money to go to a conference, because many of these conferences, you know, employees cannot afford to go, so those are excluded from, and the same is true with, like, for example, the National Conference of Councilmembers, there are all sorts, sister cities, those sorts of things, where they're acting in your official capacity as a representative of the city of Phoenix, but that they may be paid by a third party.
Okay, that, that's what I just wanted to be clear about. So, it's, it's not just, this exclusion doesn't just cover those times when the travel or whatever is being covered by the taxpayers, it's if it's any, any other group that might be paying for it.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any additional questions? Now, again, we're going to, the, the motion on the table only applies to Section 1, who the ordinance applies to. Okay, so with that, we have a motion. I made the second, so I'm going to ask for a roll call vote on Section 1.
Councilman DeCiccio.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gallego.
Yes.
Councilman Gates.
Yes.
Councilman Nowakowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Yes.
Councilman Waring.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Valenzuela. Mayor Stanton.
Yes, so that, that portion of this item passes unanimously. The next section concerns the definition of a gift. Councilman Nowakowski, you have a motion on, a proposed motion on Section 2.
Mayor, to approve staff's recommendation.
Second.
Well, we have a motion and a second. Any questions by members of this council or comments as it relates to the definition of a gift? Okay, roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Stanton.
Yes, so that section passes unanimously. Now, the next portion will be a discussion of Section, proposed Section 3, which is defining what is not a gift. Councilman Nowakowski, do you have a proposed motion on that section?
Yes, Mayor, to approve staff's recommendation, excluding from the definition of gift and conversation in the form of admission, food, or beverage to attend a community event sponsored by a community organization as defined in the Public Safety and Veterans Subcommittee draft ordinance.
Okay, I will, we do have a second on that, on that motion. Any comments on that portion of it? This section really deals with the nonprofit groups that hold community-based events that we often get invited to in the original draft, that would have been included, and this proposed draft is not included. I'm, and previously, I, I personally thought that we should report everything, but as Senator Lesko was here earlier talking about the spirit of compromise, in the spirit of compromise, I'll be supporting the motion made by Councilman Nowakowski. Any additional comments or questions by members of this council on Section 3 of the motion made by Councilman Nowakowski? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Stanton.
Yes, Section 4 is on the issue of prohibited gifts. Councilman Nowakowski, do you have a proposed motion?
Motion to approve staff's recommendation on Section 4.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments by members of this council?
Mayor, just, sorry, just one point to clarify, we're referring to Section, Section 1, Section 2, there's not some other document other than the proposed ordinance, right?
I am working off of, I'm, I'm working off of the PowerPoint slides as what I'm referring-
Okay, so this, yeah, I just want to be clear, when we're using this term "section", there's no Section 1, 2, 3, 4, other than, right? Okay.
It's a very good point, if you have a language other than "section," I'm more than happy to use it, maybe-
Yeah, I just, I just want to, what I'm doing was, I reviewed the ordinance, and I have comments on the ordinance, so I'm very quickly trying to review it and see if they apply to the sections as they're being presented here today.
This is, I, thank you for that clarification, so I'm pointing out to the area of the PowerPoint labeled Number 4, prohibited gifts, and I don't have the exact matchup to the proposed ordinance, but it's, it's the same thing. Do you have a question, additional question?
I don't, I don't on this.
Councilman DeCiccio, did you have a question or comment on that?
Well, I, it's more of a comment, Mayor.
Please.
I've been always supportive of just, I think the easiest thing we could have done when it comes to gifts is just ban them all together, just ban it. The reporting, criteria, all that, I guess, why people want to do that, it's just easier to say that, you know, no gift to politicians, period, whether it's $50, $100, whatever the amount is. I think it's a lot cleaner that way, it's a lot easier for the public to understand, it's a lot easier for those that have to fill out the forms to be able to do. So, but I'll be supporting this, but my preference would have been to ban all gifts, it's a lot easier, as my motion has been in the past.
Thank you, Councilman. Other questions by members of the council? Councilman Waring.
Just, just for future reference, so the, the sections, as Councilman Gates said, and apparently, I'm not the only one that's having a hard time following along with this, it's, it's, the sections are actually these slides, I think they're referenced. We also have the actual thing that you handed out last week, that's got the ordinance that came out of the Public Safety Subcommittee. And then we've got this, this sheet that's going to be the changes to the slides, that affair summary. Now, we didn't get either of these documents, this one I got a couple hours ago, this one I got as I walked in here, and so if the audience is wondering why we're having a hard time following this, it's because I'm trying to match up this slide to this section and so forth. It could have been laid out in a more confusing manner, but I'm not sure how you possibly would have managed that, so, you know, I guess, it's just a little hard to follow along, so bear with us as we ask questions, but it is a little bit convoluted, to say the least.
I think, I thought the intent of the PowerPoint was to provide, you know, as much clarity as possible, and to make it as easy to follow as possible, so for purposes of this discussion, we're working out the PowerPoint. There's concerns that the PowerPoint does not accurately represent the draft, and it should be pointed out, by the way, I'm not sure it's clear, we are not voting on an ordinance today. Councilman Gates will still be able to go over this with a fine-tooth comb to make sure that what the direction that we give the staff today, which is what we're really doing, will be accurately represented in a draft ordinance, which will come before this council in a very short period of time, so it won't be a long delay between, probably maybe at our next formal meeting, but because it's policy session, we're trying to give direction to the staff, and they'll, they'll put pen to paper in more detail than they've done even now, to accurately represent the direction that they've gotten today. So I'll make sure that, that is, that's clear as well. Other questions on the issue of prohibited gifts? Obviously, Councilman DeCiccio making his point that his preferred preference would have been a complete gift ban, but for the sake of compromise today, he'll be supporting Councilman Nowakowski's motion. Any other comments? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Stanton.
Yes, next is PowerPoint, Section 5, which is the gift disclosure requirements. Councilman Nowakowski, do you have a motion on PowerPoint, Section 5?
Yes, Mayor, with staff's recommendation, approved staff's recommendation with the following changes, that we disclude the requirement of boards, commission members, and volunteers, and that, that occur on a quarterly basis.
Okay, so the, the motion, well, first of all, if they're second to that motion, I'll second that motion, so instead of the 30-day disclosure requirement, it would be a quarterly disclosure requirement, and boards and commission members and volunteers would not have those disclosure requirements, although, although the ethics policy still applies to them, so if someone is not appropriately behaving in their capacity as a boarder, or commission, or volunteer, and doing inappropriate things, they could still be subject matter, they could still be subject to this, this policy. And so, just because it's not disclosed, that is, that is one mechanism to better govern this and be fully transparent, but it doesn't mean that they are not subject matter to the proposed ethics policy. Councilman Waring.
So one thing I did, I did request was, and it may be our city clerk, who I don't see, who was here, oh, Chris Meyer, so there is a bill at the legislature to change the date of our campaign finance report, you guys may not be aware of it, I am, so they're going to try to change it, because, you know, we've got, it's, it's kind of, we have some, some years, we, some years we don't, I don't think we have any this year, and so, I think they're going to mandate, Chris, if I'm not mistaken, they're going to mandate quarterly reports all the time, except around the elections, there'll be extra reports. I would say, so nobody forgets the report, you don't want to have your ethics violation being you forgot to file your ethics report, that would be kind of stupid, and it's just the kind of stuff Bob Rob talks about, it's sort of gotcha politics. So, could we make it? My request was, we file our campaign finance report as mandated by the state and the city clerk on a quarterly basis going forward, could it sync up with this, so that we just file the two reports at the same time? You're going to have to do your finance reports anyway, it's just a little reminder, and then, you know, you move on to the next quarter. I would say, take out the special reports, unless there's some people, I'm not against more reports, but, but it seems like there's no compelling reason to have extra ones necessarily before, the pre-election and post-election one they're talking about, is that something that could be done?
And this is assuming that the state legislature passes a quarterly report requirement, would it be possible to sync ours up?
Mayor, Councilman Waring, yes, the council could set the filing for this, whatever they want, and they could match the state. The city typically follows the state on campaign finance, so if that bill passed, that would be the assumption that we would follow that for reporting, and we could sync these two.
So when they make their changes, you will automatically inform us about our changes, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then, if their bill passes, you know, I guess by Mar, it kind of depends on when, when the session ends, last, last year, I think, by July 1st, right, the bills would have gone into effect, so we would have a report, campaign finance report, if the bill passed, July 1st, and then, I guess I don't know for sure when they start their quarterly reporting, so that I don't know. Do you know?
Mayor, Councilman Waring, I'm not sure that it has been set, I think that's something they're going to determine, whether they're going to set it so that it'll apply to this election cycle at the state, which I think there's some desire to do that, or whether they're going to stick with the current through this year and have it become effective next year.
Okay, yeah, that's one thing I forgot to, to look at, but, but it's just going forward anyway, at the soonest possible time, I think that would make sense, it would make it easier for me, anyway, in my record-keeping, I guess I assume it's the same for everybody else.
All right, so in, in an effort to make it as easy as possible for Councilman Waring, I will treat that as a friendly amendment to the motion, assuming the motion maker agrees with that, and the, I guess I was the second, or so I agree with it. Councilman Gallego.
At the federal level, there is a policy for gift waivers for unusual occasions, such as a wedding engagement, birth or adoption of a child, or death in the family. I would be interested in whether people think that's something we might want to mirror at the city level as well.
Okay, so the question is, do we want our proposed gift policy to mirror what's done at the federal level as it relates to weddings, birth of children, and what was the 30?
A death in the family, so if your spouse passed away, you-
Yeah, and again, we don't, as, as you know, we don't have a, under this proposal, it's not a gift ban unless that, that gift poses an undue influence on your decision-making, it's a gift disclosure requirement over $50, and what the council, I think, is suggesting is that we do not, we do not require the disclosure over $50 for those, for those occasions.
That you, you would, so it would be, you could ask for a waiver, so if you were of such a point in your life where your spouse passed away, and you wanted to track the value of the flowers, you don't have to get a waiver, but if you-
That would be horrible.
That-
Okay, and so waiver could be sought from a, we have to figure out who that decision, maybe the, the outcome of Section 6 may determine whether or not there, there is a body set up that could provide such waiver.
Mayor, if I may, the current Public Safety and Veterans Subcommittee recommendation includes the possibility to seek advisory opinions, and I would respectfully submit this is consistent with that, so as currently established, the Subcommittee could issue waivers along with advisory opinions, if, if that's the wish of the council.
Okay, are you suggesting this is a decision that hasn't been made today, but it can be made, you know, that this is, this document will be flexible in terms of, because cases are going to come up, issues are going to come up, and we're going to have to determine how to work those issues within the context of the, of the new ethics policy?
Mayor?
Councilman, please.
I, I, I support what Councilwoman just said, because I will tell you, had that happened to me last fall, I am in no frame of mind to turn around and think I have to report the value of flowers, and I understand, those are unique situations, and I don't think they should be considered.
Okay, so the, the request of Councilman Gallego, supported by Councilwoman Williams, is that we adopt federal-type language as it relates to the special occasion. I'll ask the maker of the motion if he's okay with that. Okay, so the answer is yes, and I'm the second, so I'll be okay with it, to include the federal-type exceptions for those special occasions. Councilman Gates.
Thank you, Mayor. Just looking for some clarification on this concept of, so it says here, and I am referring to C, B, 3, last sentence, "A gift with an unknown value shall be disclosed as unknown." So I can certainly envision a time when you have a gift that the value is unknown, but it most certainly is less than $50.
A nominal gift, a coffee cup and that sort of thing that we sometimes get.
But it, but it may be unknown, so can you give us some clarity on what, I think that's a trap for the unweary, as Jim Waring would say.
I've actually never used that phrase in my life, I don't know where you-
Sounded like something you would say, I don't know why.
So what, yeah, the question is, under this proposal, what happens with the nominal gift of unknown value?
Mayor, Councilman Gates, I believe the intention of the Subcommittee was, oftentimes there are community events where the ticket for admission is at a someone's table, you do not know what they paid for that ticket, and so, rather than, and sometimes they don't tell you, and so the process was- tell you, and so, the process was, if it obviously appears to be more than $50, just, but you don't know it, just place unknown. I guess what I would, would say is, we can work to provide clarity, so that we can provide some language that relates to things of de minimis value, and do a like, you know, trinket sort for that category of disclosure, recognizing there will, it will be difficult to ever perfectly be specific about, we all know that, you know, a mug of china is worth more than a mug of, you know, a little bit silly there, but I think you, you get my point.
Mayor, that, I think that would be helpful. I also think, you know, if, if you were to put together frequently asked questions and examples moving forward, probably once the ordinance has been passed, that that would be helpful for elected officials and others who will be subject to these rules.
Mayor, Councilman Gates and members of the council, the expectation is once, and this has, I think, been all along, once a policy and ordinance is adopted, that there will need and absolutely be a requirement to update the, the handbook documents for employees, and, and volunteers, and board and commission members, but most importantly, to create what does not exist today, which is a handbook for elected officials, because there are unique requirements found in state law that have influence on your actions that do not exist for the other groups. And so, that is something staff has known that we would need to work on and come back to the council and share with them, to make sure we have appropriately answered as many frequently asked questions and other issues as, as you see are necessary to make sure we've provided the clarity.
All right. Other comments on that particular section? So, we have, Councilman DeCiccio, please.
Two quick questions. One, I generally just pay my own way, but if you do, let's say you don't receive any gifts, or you, you paid for it yourself, and I believe I have the answer, I just want to make sure I just have it in the record, do you still have to complete the, the report?
So, Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, if, and I will use an example of a meal, if, if any person subject to the ordinance were to go to a meal that costs, and your portion of it costs in excess of $50, and you paid for that meal, then there is no disclosure requirement, there is no form required, because there is been no value received.
So, would you, I mean, you still, with these quarterly reports, or however it's gonna be set up, do you still have to file the report, or how does that work?
As to the example I provided you, if the person subject to the meal pays their entire cost of the meal, no gift has been created, so no report about that meal is required.
Okay. And then, the second, and I think I have an answer to this, but just as you move forward with the final ordinance, and some of you already know that I had a situation where I had a village planning member, the chair of my southern, in Awatuki, was basically getting paid by a developer, as they were handling cases, never notified anybody, never disclosed that they were doing that. Would this have an impact on that person, or not, going forward, or even behind? I don't know.
So, the request is, if, if there's a, if a individual member of a village planning committee, for example, had a undisclosed conflict of interest and acted inappropriately on a planning and zoning recommendation, could they be subject to this ethics policy?
Well, no, it's more basic than that, Mayor, if I could.
Please.
Let's say there was no conflict, but they just had this, you know, like a responsibility, I mean, the only reason that that person was hired was because they were on the village at the time. And that's, as far as I'm concerned, that's what occurred there, because the case that was gonna come up, it would, it'd be more than that. It would just be along the lines of, to me, I saw that as a gift, in a way of trying to influence this person for a future vote.
Okay, so, yeah, so the issue would be, someone gets hired, it may not have a direct conflict of interest, but gets hired for the purpose of influencing them for other reasons, so trying to win over their support for other reasons.
Right.
Could that be subject to this ethics policy?
Well, and just, Mayor, Councilmember DeCiccio, just, just so we're playing, the way that the ordinance is currently drafted, it would solely apply to conduct after the effective date. So, if, if you're speaking to conduct that's already occurred, the, any proposed ordinance would not apply to any prior conduct. It's only applying to...
No, I get that part. I was just saying, I shouldn't...
But, let's, assuming, assuming that that's, the ordinance is effective and the conduct is, takes place after the effective date, then the, this proposed ordinance would apply, and we would follow the procedures within the ordinance.
Perfect.
Thank you, Councilman.
That's an important part.
Councilman Waring?
So, in, I'm on five, Slide 5, E and F. So, so, and this is why I mentioned earlier about the kind of jumping back and forth. So, if you go to Slide 7, it's outcomes, you don't have to go to it, but 7 is outcomes. So, for a city council member, it's dismiss the inquiry, censure, and/or up to a $500 fine. But you're keeping the records for three years after we leave office. I don't know how many people are gonna care about it three years later. Can you censure, and, and can you censure somebody who's not in the body anymore?
Mayor, Councilmember Waring, again, it is the council itself that is, is self-regulating, and so, if there is a crime, it would be, again, the proper authority, it would be referred to the proper authority to enforce, because there are certain statutes of limitations. There's all sorts of, of legal consequences, and I'd hate to speculate about every nuance, but the, the short answer is no, because, again, the purpose of this ethics policy is to apply to current elected officials, current employees, current volunteers, and board members.
So, why are you keeping the forms for three more years? If you can't do anything, and you, I mean, how much time would we actually spend on former members? And that brought me up to another thing that I have asked about and not gotten any clarity, is there some sort of, you've talked about it only applies going forward. So, the situation Sal was talking about apparently happened in the past, doesn't matter, it's done. Starting July 1st, it's conduct going forward July 1st, but at what point, so three years after you're out of office, somebody could make some allegation of something, and, and the only thing that's gonna happen is there's an allegation, you can't really do anything to the person, 'cause they're gone. What's the point? What are we trying to accomplish with E?
So, Mayor, Councilmember Waring, the reason the three years is in there is to be consistent with state policy regarding public records and disclosure forms. So, that's why it's in there.
E is just for document retention.
Right, it's just...
That's it, okay, all right, well, so that's an answer.
It's just, that's, the answer is, it's consistent with retention policy. As to any future enforcement, again, with regard to this policy, it would not be, but if there was potential felonies or whatever, it might be another authority that may look at those documents, but it certainly would not be...
I'm not saying people shouldn't get prosecuted for crimes or whatever, it's just, we had already talked about that, too, so that's taken care of by actual police officers and attorney attorneys. So, all right, but that makes sense, you gotta keep it, 'cause you gotta keep it, so it's just more paper piling up that apparently nobody ever looked at. The employees, I guess I'm a little confused. So, employees on F, are you, are you keeping those for five years for the same reason?
Essentially, again, it's consistent with the retention schedule that, that we're required to keep public records.
But I don't see, am I missing something? On 7, the outcomes, so Slide 7, A, B, C, A, B, C, and D, I don't see anything about employees at all. Are we voting on employees?
Mayor, Councilman Waring?
Eventually, potentially.
The, as it was referenced in 6A, under the city charter, it, we are not recommending changes, or the Public Safety and Veterans Subcommittee did not recommend specific changes, because the charter currently provides that the city manager will provide discipline to employees. The standards that you all are, are considering today would apply to employees, but the application or implementation in the event of someone having a failure for ethics would be the responsibility of the city manager.
So, if, if a current employee right now take this policy out of it, they're not banned from accepting gifts and so forth now?
Mayor, Councilmember Waring, there is a currently administrative regulation that's been issued by the city manager that applies to gifts to employees, and the process for that. When the task force looked into it, there was an inconsistent rule applied to employees under the AR relative to elected officials, and what this policy before this board is, is to basically provide one rule for everyone.
I guess the reason I was curious about F is because, you know, we're not supposed to be dabbling in employee sanctions. The city manager is, so just like the city clerk deals with the campaign finance issues, doesn't the city manager deal with these issues? But you're saying you're including it to get uniformity? If I wanted to sum it all up, is that basically...
So, we established the ethics for the city of Phoenix, enforcement as it relates to city employees, enforcement of the ethics policy is city manager.
So, that's why there's nothing on 7, the outcomes, because you do it?
Correct.
Okay, fair enough. All right, it's just, it's, the way this is laid out and everything else, that's just a little confusing.
We've got, this will establish much tougher ethics policy for the city, but the enforcer, or at least as it relates to city employee, will be the city manager.
You're completely within your policy purview to set the standard for employees.
All right, so we have on, on item, Section 5 of the PowerPoint, we have a motion, we have a second. The motion did include some friendly amendments that'll be captured and put into the draft ordinance that'll come before us on a future city council meeting. With that, roll call.
DeCiccio?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Astor?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Alonzoila?
Stanton.
Yes. The next section is Section 6 of the PowerPoint. As was stated earlier, initially, the proposal coming out of the Public Safety Subcommittee was that the Public Safety Subcommittee serve as the inquiry entity for any proposed ethics violations under this policy. I'll now turn it over to Councilman Nowakowski to see if he has a, if he has a motion or any proposed changes to what staff has proposed before us on Section 6, the inquiry process.
Thank you, Mayor, and that's actually on our attachment on Page 5 and 6 for my members of the council that want to look at it.
Thank you.
Approval of staff's recommendation with the following changes, Mayor, that we establish a five-member ethics commission to review and make recommendations regarding accusations on ethics and gift policy violations. This commission will be established by July 1 of 2016. Another thing is that the commission will be selected by the Phoenix Municipal Court Chief Presiding Judge, and will be comprised of two Democrats, two Republicans, and one, one independent. Another point is that the chief presiding judge will submit the five names to the full council for approval. Also, that the council can approve them by a three-quarter vote. That the commission members will serve a five-year term and not be eligible for reappointment. In the first few years, that the terms should be scattered, and that the commission must be seated by July 1st.
All right, I'll second that motion, and now turn it over to members of the, of the council for questions with just this, at least on this particular item, for me, a short statement. In my opinion, this is really the, as much as anything, the meat of the proposed changes to the city, the city ethics policy. We've existed up to this point in a world in which there, when there were proposed ethics violations by members of this council that did not rise to the level of a criminal act. There was, it was incredibly awkward circumstances under which those cases would be investigated. Who'd investigate him? The city manager? We hire the city manager. Who investigates? The city attorney? Well, he's the employee of the city manager that we hire. This proposal, if passed by this council, will provide an independent body, a bipartisan, independent body, to deal with these inquiries. I appreciate what Councilman Nowakowski has proposed, that our chief presiding judge be the one that recommend those names. We will have the opportunity to vet those names, and, and if this motion passes, it'll have to be a three-quarter vote of the city council to appoint the, the members that were proposed by the chief presiding judge. I have confidence with that level of checks and balances involved in the system, with the independence that this body will have, that, first off, ethics, proposed ethics complaints that are false on their face will be summarily dismissed by this body. This body will not play politics, but they will do their duty if there are serious ethics complaints against members of, of this body, that they will do their appropriate due diligence and, and be of, of such significance that they'll have the credibility in the community to effectively deal with it, and will for once have a body that can effectively deal with ethics complaints against members of this body. It's not an easy decision, it's a tough issue. Other cities across the country have gone in this direction, independent ethics commission, and I strongly support what Councilman Nowakowski has made a motion on, because I think this will really provide confidence by the public that there is real meat to this, and that this independent body will be able to effectively deal with complaints against members of the council. Councilman Waring?
Thank you. I hesitate to bring this up, 'cause I, I appreciate your efforts and Councilman Nowakowski's efforts on this, but I have some issues about how we're selecting people for this commission. First, and this is in no way a reflection of what I think about our chief presiding judge, or really previous chief presiding judges. It's a little bit awkward, though. We vote on hiring the chief presiding judge, and we vote on their pay raise, or pay. I have always voted against the chief judge's pay raise, and I voted against the chief judge. Wasn't anything personal, wasn't, but I did. I can't really get that out of my mind, 'cause he'll be picking the five people who would be judging me if, and the fact that that entered my mind is a little odd, 'cause this is the ethics thing, and I'm not implying he's got it out to get me. I will say, not his predecessor, Judge Songong, but his previ- I'm told, anyway, I don't know the fella, his, his predecessor's predecessor, went on my Facebook, there was a city issue I was spouting off, saying a lot of the things I say at these council meetings, and this fellow took it upon himself to get on there and really light me up, or make some snotty comments. He made it clear he wasn't a fan. So, these people, they may be judges, but they have opinions, and they watch what we do. So, next time the pay raise issue comes up, for example, we're voting on a chief presiding judge, that will be flickering in the back of my head. They are people, and that's the way it is. The predecessor, two times ago, he had an opinion, and his opinion of me was not great. I'd love to discuss it with him face to face. Ed, I mentioned this to you at the ti- you know exactly what I'm talking about? I mentioned it at the time. His comments, he was thinking, I guess, somehow that the $70,000 in checks in the dumpster, that somehow that was gonna be, turn out to be because of crack efficiency in some department, and not malfeasance and ridiculousness by the city. Somehow, he was trying to defend that. I, I didn't really get why you would want to spout off on Facebook about that, but in any case, he did. Made it clear that he had an opinion. So, I, I do have a little bit of issue with that. My issue, I think, would be taken away if the vote for the independent had to be nine to nothing. Doesn't have to be nine to nothing necessarily for the Republican or the Democrat, but I would feel better if all my colleagues, who I trust and value, Democrat or Republican, I'm on the minority of this council. So, when we were talking about going to a subcommittee, pretty much all the subcommittees, if I look at it, I bet just about every one is three to one, Democrat to Republican. Again, I am not implying any bad motives to you guys, but if I somehow wound up going through this commission, I guess I gotta think, you know, you guys would be under pressure to get rid of me, frankly, or find me, or censor me, and so forth for political reasons. I'm not saying you'd, you know, succumb to that, I'm just saying that was a little bit awkward. I'd feel better if the independent was voted on nine to nothing. The staggered terms also seems a little odd. I assume the independents' term would not be staggered initially, and then one of the Republicans and one of the Democrats would be sta- you know, we've worked that out somehow. It doesn't say this here, so that's why I'm bringing it up. So, it's not as specific as I would like. But I guess I am asking for my own peace of mind, not that I'm planning on winding up in this, but I'd feel better if I could make a friendly motion to make it nine to nothing. I think I had expressed this to the people who've come around my office to talk about this, so, but it's not reflected here, it's three-quarter vote, and that's just a little concerning under the circumstances I laid out. That may seem unreasonable to people listening at home, may seem unreasonable to people, you, but I, I hope people of good faith could also sort of see my point. I don't want to be incentivized to stop voting no. It's not why people sent me down here. I don't want to say I like voting no, particularly in those circumstances, but I certainly want to keep that option open without having any kind of chilling effect on that, or on any of my successors.
All right, thank you very much, Councilman Waring, Councilman Nowakowski, Councilman Waring has made a polite suggestion as to the form of the motion. What are your thoughts?
My thoughts, I, I agree. We're just talking about the... We're just talking about the independent, right?
Yes.
Nine to zero, and then the other ones would be a three-quarter vote.
Yes.
And let me tell you that this was a, this was a very hard decision, because we had different opinions from different colleagues, and I just really want to thank the mayor and his staff for helping to come with this compromise, because it was a tough compromise in trying to find a solution and that common ground, making sure that everyone can live with this, and coming up with the presiding judge that he takes an oath in. And we felt that, no offense to our city manager, but we also supervise him and we also evaluate the city manager, but we thought the presiding judge that actually works with other judges and takes an oath, that would be the appropriate person. So with that, Mayor.
Okay, so the Councilman Nowakowski has accepted the suggestion included in his motion that the independent member of the independent Ethics Commission would have to be voted on by a unanimous vote of the city council. I won't say nine oh, because not all members may be present for a particular vote, but a unanimous vote of the city council. I was the second on the motion, and I certainly accept that suggestion as well. I would just comment real quick on the issue of the chief presiding judge being able to set aside any, you know, thoughts about his happiness or unhappiness with any particular vote, Councilman Waring, or any other individual member of this council might make. I would just say, that is what judges do. This is what judges do every single day. I'm sure Judge Gates of Superior Court has her own personal opinions on political or social issues, but her job, as required, the oath that she takes, is that she sets those aside. If she can't set it aside, she has to recuse herself from that position, but if she sets those aside and applies the law and applies the, her job as judge is in impartial way as possible, and that's our legal system, and we can't get over that as part of our legal system. So I appreciate that. I'm sure that the chief presiding judge may not appreciate any one of us on any particular vote we may have, but I have confidence that our chief presiding judge, as is required by the very nature of his job, will be able to set aside any thoughts on that as he makes recommendations on who should serve on this independent Ethics Commission. Councilman Gallego, you had a question or thought earlier?
If we require a unanimous vote, and there is, in the distant future, when we are all gone, a council member who wishes to desire, who wants this body not to meet, could that council member then refuse to appoint anyone as the independent and thus prevent the Ethics Commission from being impaneled?
As, my understanding is, as currently proposed in the motion, that if they showed up at every single vote and voted no, then no independent would be seated for purposes of this independent Ethics Commission. I'm not sure, and this is an issue I have to deal with, about whether that would then stop the business of the independent Ethics Commission? We just wouldn't have an independent on it? Would four votes or four members be enough, because it certainly would be a quorum of that?
That was not something I had contemplated, by the way, so.
I don't think this is, but I think you need to sort of think through.
Fair enough, I didn't think about that.
How it would work. And maybe it would just mean it would be deadlocks, and then you would prevent any partisan problems.
Well, that, I mean, that certainly, so that is the, a potential downside, that someone would come on this council and be so irresponsible as to vote no onto anyone under any circumstances. I don't think anybody on this current council would do so, but in the future, I guess it is a possibility and, if we decide to move forward this at Council Waring's request, that is a risk that we take. I view that as remote enough that it's a risk worth taking, and that a future council, if dealt with a, you know, a difficult member like that, they could take up ethics again and change the rules accordingly. Because this will, this will not be in the charter. This is going to be an ordinance of this council that can be changed by a future council. Any other, Councilman?
So, to your point about, I know what you're saying about Judge Gates and so forth and cases, but these aren't cases where there's case law. These are people that they're picking, presumably people that they know. So, I completely understand what you're saying. Again, I felt bad enough about saying it to even bring it up, because it seems like I'm applying some nefarious motives to our judge or judges, and I'm not doing that. At the same time, being in the minority is just a little bit concerning. And I don't think my, I had not anticipated the scenario you're talking about, so bad on me for not thinking of every possible alternative. But I didn't think my request was unreasonable until Councilman Gallego put it like that, so.
All right, thank you very much. Councilman DeCiccio, you had a comment or question?
Yeah, just a couple of quick ones. One, I agree that there ought to be at least one person that requires complete buy-in from everybody. The second thing you might want to think about in this is that, you know, we're assuming that there's going to be a Republican or Democrat bias with these two individuals that would be up there, even if you had the worst-case scenario. At some point, you gotta just believe that they're gonna do the right thing at that point. So, you know, I'm gonna be supportive of the motion to do that. The other deals with the fact, you know, I wanna, I just want to get some clarity from staff, how you deal with these frivolous complaints that are filed against people.
Thank you, Councilmen. That's a fair question. It's come up regularly as concerns about, you know, somebody that, you know, doesn't like any individual member of this council and wants to hurt you or I or anybody else as much as they can, and they file a obviously frivolous complaint with the clerk to go before the Ethics Commission as a result. How would that be handled under these circumstances? Dan Brown?
So, Mayor, Councilmember DeCiccio, consistent with the subcommittee recommendation, it would require, I guess in this case, three out of five votes if the motion passes, but it required three votes on the subcommittee in order to move an inquiry further. So, if there were not the three votes on the subcommittee, then the matter was closed. And so the way that frivolous complaints would be addressed would be that if there wasn't enough votes to move forward, at least three, which is a substantial majority, supermajority of the subcommittee, and I think a similar provision would apply to this proposed motion, then frivolous complaints would, it would be dismissed.
And that brings up the point, too, because the subcommittee is a political body, whereas the final entity that makes the recommendation of what to do with that elected official or that volunteer is going to be more of a nonpartisan, non-political person, at least we hope that they are. The situation I'm referencing is that, oh, gosh, about three years ago, we had the unions, literally, I think it was 221 complaints against me, 221. Now, I've learned my lesson from that, because I learned to always have an attorney around. I think that's what everybody's gonna have to learn to deal with. The concern that I would have here, and I'll vote for the motion to move forward, is not as much the final person or the final entity make the recommendation, but the political body that gets there, for whatever political reasons that they may have. In the future, I don't think anyone in this council would be that reckless, but you never know moving forward in the future, too, as things get a little bit more heated in, you know, the political world. So what kind of rebuke could occur to those people that make the recommendation if it turns out that they frivolously keep sending things forward just for the sake to try to embarrass somebody, trying to create, you know, try to push reforms at the city of Phoenix?
Councilman, are you referring to potentially irresponsible members of the Ethics Commission or irresponsible members of the public who would keep filing frivolous complaints?
No, well, the public would be filing it. That's just something that they're gonna do, okay? I mean, I accept that already. What I'm getting at is the three of the five, or the, what was the, three of the five had to turn forward to the final entity, correct?
Yes. So we consistently had an irresponsible member of the commission that is, was acting in a obviously political way towards one member of this, of this council. What would be the removal process? And have we thought about that? Mr. Brown? Have we, and then the proposal that Councilman Nowakowski has proposed, could the council vote to remove a member of the independent commission? Again, with the scenario Councilman DeCiccio has suggested, which is someone is obviously acting in an overtly partisan way and moving forward with recommendations for penalties, even though they're not justified?
Mayor, certainly the, if the council wishes to add that policy as part of the motion, we could certainly do that. And again, you could require either a simple majority or a supermajority, or again unanimous to remove the member.
Councilman Nowakowski, you want to add removal process that would require that whatever this, the vote was to put him on, would the vote to remove?
I agree with them, Mayor.
Okay, that's a very, obviously, you know, the same process in to vote him out?
Mayor, so this would become now a new board and commission of the city, and there are existing provisions in, Dan, why don't you go in and talk about that?
Yeah, so currently, yes, Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, currently under section 2-5-3, there is already a process, which we're amending, or proposed to amend today, that allows the removal of a board or commission member. So, the city code already contemplates removal, and so.
That by a vote of the council?
It is.
Okay, so I think what the suggestion was, is that there has to be a supermajority in, it probably needs a supermajority out, otherwise, you know, the, you know, if they're, if it takes seven to get the two Democrats on, it couldn't, it would not make sense then to have five to take them off. That would probably be inconsistent. Okay.
Mayor?
Council, please.
Just one more question, too. Only because of frivolous part, I had to, I got the great experience to be able to have to deal with this, and it went on for quite a while. So these are the areas that I want to just make sure there's some clarity.
Please.
When someone files a complaint from the public, does it still go, are we still talking about it going to the subcommittee or directly to the commission?
Please.
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, in this case, the sub, in what I understand what is proposed, the subcommittee's role no longer exists as to the inquiry process for ethics. So solely, you would have this commission who would then make recommenda-, would make decisions, some of which could involve dismissal or recommendations on to the full city council.
Oh, so the complaint, okay, so I just wanted to make sure I was clear here. So a complaint from a citizen goes directly to the commission, that it bypasses the political process?
It is, complaints would be collected by the city clerk, who would then forward them to the commission.
Cool, I like it. I'm good.
The wisdom of the proposal by Councilman Nowakowski is that you would have the independent commission investigate and make recommendation, but ultimately would be this council that would make the final vote on penalty towards a member of this, of this council. It's kind of a balance, it's a balancing, I think the appropriate checks and balances are there, and that's what I like about the proposal.
Mayor? Yeah, no, I agree, Mayor. I, you know, I think I should be concerned all the way through, but the biggest part, the concern that I always had upfront was who does the predetermination, you know, the judging upfront? When it gets to the council, at that point with those three-member body, you've usually got something there, generally, not always, maybe, I don't know. So my more, the most, the concerns I've got primarily deal with, how, who touches that complaint? How does it go through the process? Who sees that? You know, where does it go? I mean, you can't prevent the public from, you could, but putting penalties over time if they're frivolous, but, you know, realistically, the public has a right to complain, they have a right to redress, meaning I like it, and they can file numerous complaints.
All right, thank you. Councilman Williams?
Mayor, I just want to make a comment that we keep saying non-political, but you're talking about a presiding judge that's appointed by this council, is reviewed by this council, and the salary is set by council to appoint two Democrats, two Republicans, and an independent. That sounds political to me.
Okay, I appreciate that. I think the intent was to make it as non-political as possible by having the chief presiding judge be the one to recommend the individuals, that this body would have to, you know, make sure that we support those recommendations by at least a three-quarter vote of this council, and the point of the independent is a nine oh vote. And so I think the idea is to, as much as we possibly can as a political body, take politics out of that and create independence with this, with this commission. At the end of the day, can you completely take politics out of politics? Probably not, but I think this recommendation goes as far as you can to try to take politics out of, out of this important, you know, this important commission, which is going to make important recommendations someday about potential ethics violations. Councilman Waring?
Councilman Williams is right, you're never taking politics out of it. I, I just, being on the minority here, voting against the chief judge, I don't think concerns like Councilman DeCiccio expressed are unwarranted at all about the frivolous complaints and so forth. A couple of things come to mind. So are people applying to be on this commission, or is the judge just picking who he wants? It doesn't say anything about that here.
Well, I think it would be up to the chief presiding judge to probably make that determination, if he wants to seek applications from the community at large.
Well, I guess I'd change that. He should seek applications. First, he should seek applications. We have a model for this. It hasn't been a great model. There were a lot of complaints this last time about the real independence of the head of the Clean Election, or Redistricting Commission. But those people, so I think the Republicans have to be a Republican for five years, the Democrats have to be a Democrat for five years, at least registered. I forget if there's some voting requirement, like they actually had to be participating in elections. But there are definitely rules that I'm gonna want to see in the final ordinance. It can't just be like, oh, yeah, today, I just changed my education yesterday, and, you know, they've been voting in Democrat primaries for 20 years, that's, now they're suddenly a Republican. Independent, I would say same thing. I do not think you're gonna get applicants or friends of judges who aren't involved in politics. These names, I suspect, are gonna probably be familiar to us, and frankly, I'll just candidly confess, I've made my share of enemies over time. You guys all have too. But again, it's just a little bit worrisome in that, so I'd at least feel better if people were applying. I don't think anybody who's not interested at all in politics is gonna suddenly decide, hey, I haven't voted in 20 years, but today I've decided I'm gonna apply to be on the Ethics Committee. I just don't think that's gonna happen.
I appreciate that.
That's not realistic. So, but I do think it shouldn't be just people the judge knows, I think people the judge doesn't know, and we also haven't limited it to people in Phoenix, have we? Or maybe it should be people from outside Phoenix, I'm not sure.
Okay, and let me just suggest that the difference between this and the Independent Redistricting Commission is that by state, by the vote of the people, the governor gets to pick somebody, and it doesn't have to be approved by the legislature, he just gets to pick. In this case, whoever the chief presiding judge would recommend would have to be approved by a three-quarter vote of this council. So I personally believe that there's enough protection in there that, I'm fairly well guessing that.
All right, is it gonna have to be unanimous? Is it gonna have to be?
The independent would have to be unanimous, the other members of the body would have to be by a three-quarter vote of this council. So I believe there's enough checks and balances and protections in there, that we're not gonna get people that are, you know, have switched their political party the day before in order to sneak through, that there's enough ability to vet these people and then enough protection in terms of the level of vote that you need, that we're protected. That's my take. I think that this, that this proposal was very well thought out and crafted to have the appropriate checks and balances in there.
I guess I'll just say, I'm not comfortable with just picking whoever they want to pick. And I'm in a different situation than you are in terms of how I feel about this and my role on this council. So, I'm fighting City Hall a lot, and I recognize that, and that doesn't always win you a lot of friends. I'm not anticipating trouble, but, but at the same time, I am aware from Sal's hard experience what can happen. So it would probably be better if it was more than just five people, frankly, to limit any potential shenanigans, but I'm willing to accept this proposal. I think it was offered in good faith. I think, again, I'm making a good faith suggestion that we have applicants rather than just people that we know, because we're confident in some other guy who we give the job to and vote on a salary. That doesn't sound that unbiased to me. I think Councilman Williams was alluding to that, too.
I think the chief presiding judge is a very wise person, and I'd be pretty surprised if he didn't openly seek app, he's probably gonna contact members of this council that seek our advice about people we think ought to, that could pass muster of this three-quarter vote. So I think we have enough, you know, he doesn't just get to pick, he has to go through this body. We have to approve these members, again, with a minimum of a three-quarter vote. Any other questions? Please, of course, Councilman, please.
So who is doing the investigations? We talked about the five people doing investigations. Are they all gonna be private investigators? Are their names Magnum and Rockford, or how are we actually gonna have them? I had to give you one today, Bill, so that's right. But a little 70s and 80s throwback there. But I guess, is it gonna be city staff?
If I could, Mayor, Councilman Waring, the draft ordinance for discussion today that is before you contemplated the notion of a fact-finder, a selected, previously by the subcommittee, could be selected by the commission if this, if this proposal is adopted, and both who they are, and they're selected from a qualified vendors list of, of law firms who have the capacity to do such work. They pick, they set the scope of that person's work, not, at least the intention was, and what was before, before you that came from the subcommittee, was city staff was not engaged other than help. the subcommittee, was city staff was not engaged, other than helping to set up a qualified vendors list. And it could, clearly, that sort of role and function could exist as to the commission.
So, I guess to follow up on that, so they're not, like, so Sal talked about the 221, apparently frivolous, because he's still here, and I never heard anything more about him, complaints. So, people file a whole bunch of complaints, and the commission doesn't have to hire somebody, right? They don't have to go hire a law firm, they can just say, this is ridiculous, it's silly, is that basically how we're expecting this to go?
Mayor, Councilman Waring, the commission has the prerogative to, the subcommittee, again, this as a substitute, had the prerogative to pursue an inquiry, or just simply dismiss it. And, and so, as to complaints where there is a frivolous nature, you've seen five of these last week, and you see five of these this week, the, the subcommittee could, or the commission could make its choice to dismiss these on their face, without an investigation. They could choose to investigate, and then could dismiss following an investigation, and so on.
Thank you. All right, Councilman DeCiccio, you have something, please?
Mayor?
Councilman, go ahead, Councilman DeCiccio.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think some of the things that Councilman Waring was bringing up, I think are completely valid, and I think the more arms-length of a relationship you have from those that are doing the investigation, those that are making the decision, to the actual organization itself, the better off we're going to be. It's going to be a lot cleaner process, it'll be one that'll be more accepted by the public, should there be a bad ruling in place that someone doesn't like. So, the more arms-length, as you move along this process, the better you're going to be. And some of the things that Councilman Waring had brought up are completely valid. I mean, if you think about it, if you go back to, and I keep using this as an example, but it was a pretty significant example that I think everybody needs to be aware of. The organization itself, the 221, almost all of them were city employees, most of them were, I should say. So, if you're pushing reforms, or if you're voting against pay raises, you're going to get that type of reaction. So, if you don't have that arms-length relationship from, you know, from the body, you're going to have problems, and people are going to start to question it, and then it's not going to work, it's going to fail at that point. So, the more arms-length, the better off it's going to be. I agree with Councilman Waring, there's always going to be those concerns that are out there. I'm going to vote for this process moving forward, I think it's about as good as you're going to find right now. You know, it's hard to figure out what those unintended consequences are until you actually see them. But, I think that the three-quarter vote for the commission, the unanimous vote for the independent, the fact that the commission can hire their own fact-finder, and it's not done from city staff, but I think it's going to have to be important that city staff cannot start interjecting in there either, because we saw what happened with the last city attorney, you know, his relationship, and how he made things happen here at the city of Phoenix, pushing, you know, an agenda that I didn't think was correct. But, he literally had an influence on things. So, the less influence, the better it's going to be.
Thank you very much, Councilman, Councilman Nowakowski, did you have something? Other councilmembers? See if anybody else, Councilman Waring's had many chances, you're going to get back in, but anybody else have any comments or questions on this portion of it? Councilman Waring?
Yes, I did. So, and again, this is not, not criticism, but, but something was said about the judge, I can't remember how it was phrased, us having a participatory role, or potentially meeting these people, or the judge floating the names to us beforehand. I would argue that's the last thing I'd want to see. I, I think these should be names, that should be brought to us pretty much cold. And frankly, I'm hoping I don't recognize any of them. I suspect that won't really be the case, given that there just aren't tons of people, you know, necessarily volunteering for these different commissions and so forth. But I wouldn't think it would work like that. I guess I would assume that people would, would, you know, send in resumes, I'm hoping more than one for each position, but I don't know what I'm really expecting here. You know, if we're really thinking, and I think the potential is there, I'm not saying that's a prediction, but I think the potential is there, that you're going to have five complaints a day about Councilman DeCiccio, or any of us, you know, particularly around election time, and they're going to be meeting, I guess, like, every day, or something, this might not be the most attractive job in the world. I think if you talk to people who have been on the Clean, or, again, the, the Redistricting Commission, I'm not sure you'd have a lot of repeat offenders there, if, if they were given a chance to do it over again, time in court, time, so forth, for something that's not really a standing committee. I sense frustration from the ones that I've talked to in the past. So, I am a little concerned about the number of volunteers we might get, but I do think that's a better way than, than a judge just picking people they know. That seems pretty insular, that's kind of what's gone on in the city of Phoenix for a long time, we just interns rise up the ranks, and that's just the way it is, and so forth. Sometimes going outside is better. I didn't see anything that says people on the commission have to be from Phoenix. Or, to get more impartiality, maybe they're, you know, to Sal's point, he didn't say at this point, this way, but, but maybe they should be from outside Phoenix, if you want more unbiased people who aren't filing city politics probably as much. So, that's my two cents worth. I do not believe anybody's made any kind of motion to say the judge has to accept applications. It sounds like it's going to be at his discretion. I disagree with that.
Okay, Councilman Pastore?
I just, a point of clarity. Once we have this framework into play, and once we move forward, you will be coming back to us. I think we're discussing details that probably each one of us would have a conversation with, regarding details, or what, regarding our concerns, and you'll be coming back to us with all the final pieces before we finalize everything.
Mayor, Mayor Councilwoman Pastore, absolutely, we haven't, we believe we're getting policy direction, and then we need to go away and prepare a draft ordinance that reflects what you have told us today, as you have voted on these individual items, and then there will be subsequent, I am sure, dialogue about the specific components or details of the ordinance.
So, we would be able to, you've heard some of our concerns regarding the commission, and who, and what, and then, we can, we have time to look at these concerns, and then be able to come up with a, possibly a better way of a commission, or looking at it.
That is correct.
Okay.
Where there are options, Dan and I will provide options, and you all can select from those, because there may not only be one way to do some of these things. We'll, we'll do our best to position it in a way that it's clear where the choices are and the alternatives.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Waring?
I just, so, to that point, and I take it as criticism, it's just, my understanding was this session was to bring up exactly these kind of things, and I think, I know you're going to go back and work on it, I understand this isn't the final version, but rather than have meetings, you know, I thought I might as well talk about this stuff now, I thought it made sense to do so. You know, you heard some of my concerns, you know, some addressed, some not, but I appreciate, appreciate you hearing it out. I think this was the right forum to do it, out in the open, TV and all that, so, and hopefully, they weren't unreasonable.
I think, yeah, to make sure it's clear, the, the big-picture policy issues, we're giving direction to our, to our staff right now. There are some, I would phrase as minor things, once you get to the drafting of the language, that there may still be minor decision points, but the big issues are being decided today in terms of this direction. Obviously, anybody can change their mind if they want, but this is, this is the opportunity to give input to our staff on these important issues.
I mean, as you suggested, Mayor, you know, number six, I thought was kind of the meat of it. I did have some concerns. To me, they were big concerns, they may not seem like big concerns to you guys, as again, you sit in different places in relation to the city structure and so forth, so, I just had concerns that I wanted to be aired. I don't think it was being too, sort of...
You're on the council, you're allowed to bring up...
I think I just want, I want to give you guys clarity, you were looking for clarity, right? You didn't have clarity before in 2012, I guess, has it really been that long? Four years since we discussed, holy cow, time flies. Well, here we are again. But in any case, I want to make sure that that did not happen again.
I think very much, we have a motion, we have a second. By the way, for the record, you did vote against the city manager's pay as well, and it has never, ever affected the city manager's recommendations.
My parking space is across the street. No, just kidding. It's not across the street. Not across the street. He wouldn't even notice, he doesn't even know if my parking's across the street, he's so out of touch.
We have a motion on Section 6, we have a second, roll call.
DeCiccio?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastore?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
No.
Valenzuela?
Stanton.
Yeah, so the motion passes on a eight-to-one, eight-to-one vote. Section 7 in the PowerPoint is next. Councilman Nowakowski, do you have a proposed motion on Section 7?
Yes, Mayor, I move for staff's approval of staff's recommendation.
We have a motion to support what the staff was recommending, which came out of the subcommittee on Section 7, which is the outcomes. Do we have a second, I'm sorry, I'll second if no one else seconded it. Questions or comments, Councilman Gates?
Thanks, Mayor. So, I really didn't, there wasn't the right place to, to address this, so I'll just address it here, which is the ethics policy itself. And this is really fundamental, that people need to understand, when we talk about whether or not there's been a violation of the ethics policy, it's not just the gift policy, and it's not just a conflict of interest. The ethics policy says that, you know, members of this body, along with, with other volunteers, should maintain the utmost standards of personal integrity, truthfulness, honesty, and fairness, fairness, in carrying out their public duties. So, I'm just very concerned about what we mean by that. I think we need some real clarity, because one person's unfairness may be perceived as another person's being a great zealot representative of, of their constituents. So, gift policy, you violate it, I get that. Conflict of interest, you violate it, I get that. These concepts of honesty, fairness, truthfulness, I think we need some real clarity now, today, so that we're not sitting here three years from now going, oh, that's not what I meant by that, oh, that is what I meant by it. So, I guess it would look to staff.
Mayor, Councilman Gates, I guess I will start with the fact that this is found in 2-52 of the Phoenix City Code, and so it has, but this is not as a, as that specific construct. I'm not arguing your point.
Yeah, and what I would say to that is, I, I understand that, but before, we weren't voting on the authority to remove people from office. That, that, no one has ever had the ability to remove people from office for a violation of this ethics policy. We're being asked to create now a structure where someone can be removed from, from their position.
Mayor, Councilman Gates, the removal from office of a board and commission member has always existed. I don't believe we're asking for the removal of an elected official, so I apologize if I'm misunderstanding the question.
When this was before this body in 2012, there was the possibility of removal of office. I did support that, but I, I was alone.
Yes, so my, my mistake, I apologize, but certainly a censure is a significant thing we can imagine in the context of a political campaign, that that's significant. So, all that I'm saying is, is I think that clarity, I understand this verbiage existed before, but I think that this body needs clarity on what's meant by that, and what we believe will be deemed to constitute a violation of personal integrity, truthfulness, honesty, and fairness.
I'd like to... Okay, well, first off, I know it was a point well made, but did you, was that a question for the professional staff, or?
I would love, I would love to, to get their input.
Can I, can I try an example, to illustrate your...
What's a, a lady, the Councilman Gates?
I, I just want to make sure that we get this issue debated and discussed, and get clarity. So, whoever, you know, I don't care who wants to address it.
Okay, Councilman Waring, did you have a particular question?
All right, well, I have a specific example from a couple of weeks ago. So, we discussed the Roosevelt Row issue, right? We had the vote, we got answered a question I asked four times, and it turned out to be false. So, now that was staff, not us. We'd already voted, we had to go back and undo the vote, and vote again, and it changed the outcome of the vote. Now, if that had been one of us, is that an ethics violation? I mean, we were told stuff that was false, the answer apparently was readily available, because it revealed itself later. I'm not saying, looking for sanction and so forth, I'm just saying his point is well-founded. Honest mistakes, or, or screw-ups, or whatever, do happen to everybody. And those are broad terms that he's talking about.
Let me, let me address that first. On the issue of staff presentation to this council, and whether it was up to the professional standards of the city, that, that would really be an issue of the city manager dealing with his employees, that would not be a matter for us. And that, that would not be covered by this ethic policy, because that would be more a matter of employee discipline. As it relates to this council, if someone were to make a statement that, you know, Jim Waring lies all the time and files a complaint with the Ethics Commission, there's a, there's a procedure in here to summarily dismiss that obviously frivolous complaint. I think the language is most in the, in the, in the realm of a preamble to a state, state statute, and so, I think that, I think the commission has enough checks and balances in it to effectively deal with frivolous, frivolous complaints of that, of that nature. If somebody has consistently lied to the public in order to gain a, a political vote, or some, or some gift, or something, then, then that, the policy would obviously apply to that situation.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, Mayor. If this is the preamble, I mean, the problem is, it says ethics policy, this is the policy. I would agree with you, this is more preamble-type language, so, maybe if this was moved elsewhere, I think it might address these issues. But right now, if I'm looking at this as a lawyer, in determining whether or not someone violated this, all the superstructure that's being created here, I would go to Section B, that's the ethics policy, that's actually what we're talking about. So, maybe this language be, I mean, this is, this is what, when this commission gets it and tries to decide, okay, was this a violation of the ethics policy or not, they're going to look at a policy that has, I agree with you, has a lot of sort of preamble-type language in it.
Okay, well, I, you know, again, I think that there is enough checks and balances in this system to effectively deal with complaints of that sort of ambiguous nature, and that this group is going to be smart enough, sophisticated enough to, to deal with that. You may disagree, but I, but I, but I think, I think we're going to be, I think over time, we're going to show them to be okay, and if, if changes need to be made, again, this is an ordinance, not a charter provision, we can have, come back before this body and make appropriate changes. That's my personal opinion. Councilman DeCiccio, please.
Oh, thanks. So, this section does, my understanding is that it did not apply to elected officials.
Uh, let me see, no, on the, on the, on the electa officials portion of it, it would, what, the possible outcomes, as recommended by the subcommittee chair, is that if recommended by the Ethics Commission, and voted on by this council, a member of this council could be subject to censure and/or a financial penalty up to $500 for boarding...
So, they're, they're going to be making a determination of what is, like a fact-check, basically, the commission?
The commission will, could hire a independent investigator, that, and then that investigator would provide those facts to that independent body, and that independent body would then take a vote as to whether they think there should be a penalty, but then this council would then have to vote on the ultimate penalty against a member of this council, in terms of censure and/or up to $500 fine. Again, I, I personally thought it should be, we should have the ability to do even more significant penalty in the case of, like what happened in San Diego with the problem with the mayor at that time, the council was very frustrated that they couldn't remove him from office despite the overwhelming problems that he created for that city. They had to ultimately settle in kind of a, a threat of litigation against him, but, but this council, in their wisdom, thought better of it, and decided not to have that level of potential penalty against this body, and again, out of a spirit of compromise, I'll be supporting the subcommittee chair who made the recommendation. But yes, this, this council, yeah, go ahead, Councilman.
Oh, just to finish up on this, I, I'm not going to be supporting this part of it. I think it's just way too subjective. I think it creates a chill on First Amendment issues, of whether or not an elected official should be able to say what they want to say, and then let the public make their determination whether or not to remove that person from office. When you start creating this politically correct squad of individuals, what is and what is inappropriate, you're going to create a chill, where individuals that are in the minority are going to have a problem. So, I, I, until there's clarity here, until I see some objective standards of what they're talking about, I'm not going to be supporting this, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Waring?
So, where does campaign speech fall on this? Because, well, New Hampshire's voting today.
Because, well, New Hampshire's voting today, and people are yelling, you're lying about me, I'm lying about you, so forth. Somewhere, people probably are, they do fact checks in the newspaper all the time, half true, half false, you know, they give four stars, one star, two stars. How do you address that? And does campaign speech fall into this?
So Mayor, and if I can, Councilmember Gates and DeCecio and Waring, so the language that was just quoted is existing law. That is existing section two dash five-two, and actually what you're doing today is developing a process to provide clarity. That's exactly what the task force was saying, is there is no way to provide that clarity to a council member now if they sought that.
Other than elections.
Well, so what is being quoted is, we are not proposing any changes to the ethics terms or conditions. That's existing law as it sits now. And so that was an issue that the task force itself made the recommendation, so to provide a process to help provide clarity under jurisprudent standards, which are reasonable person standard, essentially.
Mayor?
Just, Councilman Waring, please.
Thank you. So, so you didn't really tell me anything I didn't know there. It's just now we have this commission with five people that, all due respect, the mayor's talked about, like, we know who they are, and they're solid. We have no idea who they are, or what they'll be like, or how many applicants we'll get. We might not even get five applicants, who knows? There may be applicants that we, I guess, potentially, just people the judge knows. I mean, that, you know, if, so, so again, for those of us really speaking as someone, I'm not speaking for all the people in the minority, I'm just saying, as a person of the minority, that's a little bit nerve-wracking for me. So I quoted a statistic earlier in our pension discussion, I said it was $122 million this year out of the general fund. So if it's $122,500,000, was that a lie? And I think to Councilman Gates's point, how do we know? Well, we're going to rely on these five people to have great judgment. Yeah, well, maybe. That doesn't make me feel that great, though. To Councilman DeCecio's point, that could have a chilling effect on what I say. Voters will decide if I'm trying to pull shenanigans on them or something in that context. We already have a mechanism for dealing with that. It's called elections. So again, I'm not against this, I'm actually prepared to support it, but please understand, I, I, I do so with some trepidation about how this could be used for political purposes. Councilman Williams is right, the idea that this is not a political thing is, that's, that's a stretch, to say the least.
Okay, Councilman DeCecio, do you have something?
Yeah, this is the part that, this is the section that I had the most concern over, just because I think it dealt with First Amendment issues. If it's already codified in state law, or into law, there would be really no reason to bring this forward. But, so let's say, staff, and I'll just ask Dan or whoever would like to give the presentation, give me an example of distorted speech that would end up taking somebody off the council.
I'll make sure it's clear, Councilman, the, the penalty for removal from office of a council member is not a part of today's discussion. The only penalty for a council member is censure or up to a $500 fine. Is that correct, Dan?
Okay, well, let's censure, then.
Yeah, but now-
Or, or fine, or-
The removal would be for a board or commission member. We could remove them from their position as a result of an ethics violation that the Ethics Commission would recommend. But as was pointed out by Dan, we, we actually already have that power. We can remove somebody from, from, from office, from the, or board of commission. But no, for, as it relates, as it relates to council members, the penalty is only censure and/or $500, up to $500 fine.
Well, let's just get off the penalty part then, Mayor, then. I'd just like to have staff give me an example of a type of speech that would be problematic.
All right, Dan, I think Dan Brown is struggling to come up with an example, and you can't come up with one, that's okay.
Well, you've got to have some examples, why would you have this there? I mean, you want to stop something. So what is that something you'd want to stop? I mean, you've got to have an example.
So Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, my understanding of the ethics policy, which was adopted long before I think I was even born, but essentially, my understanding is, it's aspirational. It sets a standard of ethics for the entire city organization, meaning elected officials, employees, and so it, it has been established that way. And, and again, what the task force was acknowledging is that currently, the city manager addresses issues of violations of the ethics policy with regard to employees, but with regard to elected officials, it is, it is essentially silent. And so that's why they proposed, they made several recommendations, we have now, through the Public Safety Subcommittee, are bringing to you their recommendation on how to address that. Beyond that, I, I really can't think of a potential violation without specific facts, and I think any commission would have to look at the specific facts and look, investigate it, and then, again, this body by a supermajority would have to agree by them. So I think, as contemplated, the process itself includes a number of checks and balances.
Well, Mayor, if I could, I'm going to keep this going forward, this line of questioning. Dan, aspire some facts that would lead to a problem. Give us an example.
Well, I think he just said he, he's struggling to, to do so under this, under this section, so I'll-
Well, then, let, let me give you some examples, then. Let me say somebody comes up, says something, you don't agree with it, and you say, well, these are the facts. Well, let's, let's use an example. I've always used the example that the average city employee, the cost is $110,000 per employee. The unions always come out and say it's not. We have, I have the facts on my side, I believe that they're there, so they may say something else.
I mean, I don't know what to-
Does that work?
No, I appreciate that. I think, I, if someone were to file a complaint to you under those circumstances, I have the highest level of confidence that this independent Ethics Commission would dismiss it summarily, and it would be, it would, I mean, it wouldn't move forward under, under this proposal, and-
But Mayor, I, what I'm trying to get at is this.
What, yes?
Is this is the one area, the most important area, where you're going to see political shenanigans occur. This is it, because primarily the unions in, in particular are the ones that are going to have the hardest time with this, and they're going to be able to file one complaint after another, then you're going to see the other side doing the same thing to the other, you know, you're going to see a, a problem here. And this is a cool on speech. It just is. If people don't like it, that's too bad. I mean, I don't like a lot of things people say. So this is a politically correct section here, and it's meant to stifle speech. I'm going to be opposed to it, Mayor, until I see what the facts are.
No problem. The section involves the outcomes, the potential penalties. I might politely argue the opposite, that the, you know, technically, we're not changing the ethics standards on this section at all as it relates to speech, the, the section that Councilman Gates read earlier. That's been, that's been the law here in the city of Phoenix for decades. The issue is really, if we're going to have an ethics policy, then we have to have a system to enforce. I might politely argue that if someone were to file a frivolous claim against you, and it's treated as a frivolous claim and summarily dismissed, that, that, that would show people that the position you took may be actually accurate, or the stronger position. So to have an outlet, if you will, to, to have an independent entity make that decision may be your benefit, and I, but we've obviously might be politely disagree on that.
But Mayor, I can argue that side, because I went through that, it was before you were here. When the unions are filing their complaints, what you saw in the newspaper, because Arizona Republic, is they biased, and it just is, Dustin Gardner in particular, you saw articles, all these complaints against Al DeCecio. What you didn't see was that they were all frivolous. You didn't see that. You had a city attorney say the words like, yep, these are ser-, these are serious complaints against this individual. They went over to the Attorney General's office, and less than 15 seconds, he threw it off his desk. So you had bias throughout the system.
You, the, the, this is intended, if someone, if a complaint rises to a level of a criminal allegation, this policy doesn't affect that, because there are currently mechanisms in place to deal with criminal allegations, and that would appropriately be before the Attorney General's office or the county attorney's office. This is intended to deal with issues of ethics that fall below the level of a criminal allegation. We have an ethics policy in place, but there's no enforcement mechanism. So when, an allegation of someone has violated the city ethics policy, there, there is cur- especially as it relates to a council member or mayor, there currently is no place to go. And this is intended to plug that, in my opinion, very, very important hole that we have in our, in our system.
It's not an allegation of criminal complaint, Mayor, it's a concern of speech. And who is, should be the ultimate judge here? You shouldn't have people that have a certain viewpoint be able to judge what one, what one person should or should not be able to say. You know, I'm going to lose the argument, I know, so I'll end it here, but I'm telling you that this is a First Amendment issue, it deals with speech, I'll wait and see what the rules come back as, and what kind of plan that they're going to have in place, but until then, I'm going to vote no on this, just because I believe it's a First Amendment right.
All right, thank you very much. Councilman Waring, do you have anything, final questions or comments?
Do, I do. I don't know if they're final, but, but I do have questions. So first, I would say a statement, there isn't anybody in any walk of life who's going to say, yeah, bring on all those ethics complaints, because when I beat them, I'll be the better for it.
Right.
Nobody, that, that's, that assumption is, is, that's just a non-starter, in any walk of life, much less this one. I guess I would say, so there was a, when the police chief was let go a year or so ago, I guess a little more than a year ago now, there was an allegation that a member had called for their firing. So that was, I believe, investigated and dismissed by the, by the county attorney's office? I can't remember the exact process that goes through.
Mayor, Councilman Waring, that was referred by our city attorney to another city attorney of another jurisdiction.
Okay, because he can, there's our city attorney, okay. So, so now we have this ethics policy, that was a very debatable point, some people heard one thing, some people heard another, I think it speaks directly to Councilman DeCecio's point, where does that fall in the ethics? So because that's, is that because it's a charter issue that automatically goes to the attorneys?
It'll look to the city attorney, but that was an allegation of a charter violation, not an ethics violation.
Okay, so because it was charter, that wouldn't be covered by this. Nobody could say, oh, I'm also going to, let me ask this, the campaign finance and then this, or I guess any of the other stuff we've talked about that are being automatically referred to other police, or county attorneys, or something, or the city clerk for that campaign finance. Does that preclude someone from filing an ethics violation about it, too? Because that seems like two bites of the apple for political opponents.
Again, Mayor, Councilmember Waring, the way it's, it's set up is that obviously anyone can file a inquiry, but the inquiry as it currently sits would be suspended pending referral to the other proper agency, and then the, until that agency concludes its enforcement, and then it would be returned, and then the Ethics Commission would, at that point, address it if there's any remaining issues. But once the outside agency looks at it and enforces it, in all likelihood, would take no other further action.
Okay, so that, that's a positive, but I do take Councilman DeCecio's point, I'm surprised you guys couldn't come up with examples, because I just thought of a couple. In this case, there is a, a place where this can go, that's not the Ethics Commission, but I, I am envisioning a scenario, because it has been said, basically, well, when you get sort of set free by the Ethics Commission, I just wonder what the lawyers' bills for that are going to be. I mean, it sounds like they're hiring a law firm. So I guess that means I'd be hiring a law firm. Wow, is that going to be expensive. Let me tell you how unhappy I am about that concept. Now, when the first person who was, I guess, the emissary from four years ago, it's hard to believe, came to my office, he's an attorney, and talked about this from the Ethics Commission that was set up to come up with this in the first place, he said, oh, it's no problem, you just hire a lawyer. Yeah, no offense to our two lawyers here, or you, but that's what lawyers always say. But for most of us, that's not really something we want to do every day, if we can avoid it. That'll be a hard thing, frankly, to explain to my wife, oh, why are we spending all this money on legal fees for some frivolous complaints and so forth that get dismissed? So no, I'm not thrilled about that idea, and to just quickly dismiss our concerns as completely unfounded, or somehow frivolous, or don't worry, those five commission members, they'll be rock solid when we have no idea who they are, I think is a little dismissive, frankly. And something that should be probably given more thought, because this might not always be a Democrat-controlled council. I will say one thing about the removal from office. So I saw a seat made of mine when I was in the legislature be removed from office by the Clean Elections Commission, and they thought that was great, you know, they got, they got somebody, they removed him, he's passed away now, rest his soul. So they got rid of him, so you know what happened? Like, maybe 45 precinct committee people, all Republicans, got together and had a meeting, I was there, and selected his replacement, or three potential replacements, that got sent to the county supervisors, and they, you know, they picked out of that. That was considered a lot better than the 100,000-plus people who actually voted in election that selected the guy in the first place. Now, it's worse here. Mayor Stanton got his council seat when somebody left, and he got appointed. Councilman Gates, when somebody left, he got appointed. Councilman DeCecio this time around, got his seat when somebody left and he got appointed. I beat somebody who got appointed. So it happens a lot. So we were talking about removing elected officials, again, it's a majority Democrat council, and then it would be, if, say I got removed, five to three, this body selects my replacement. That's not a great idea. So that got shot down, because that wasn't a particularly great idea. It's much better to have voters decide. It may be not perfect, but it's much better to do that than have us picking an insular group from people that we know. We're talking about doing the same thing, having the judge pick. Who's he going to pick? People he knows. And he's going to what, shop the people around to us? And then we're going to have a say in the selection of our potential jurors? That doesn't make any sense at all. But it sounds like that's what we're going to get. I would argue this is better than at least some of the alternatives we heard before. Maybe I'm just being paranoid, but I, again, I've asked the audience this before, if you were in my situation, wouldn't you maybe feel the same? Are my fears completely unfounded? So I'll vote for it, but, but I do have concerns, and I would appreciate if they got addressed with a little more verve than they have been. Thank you.
All right, so right now we have a motion on section seven, we have a second. Roca.
DeCecio?
No.
Gallego?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Bolanzuela?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes, so I, I believe it passed on an eight to one vote. The final section is section number eight, the effective date. Councilman Nowakowski, do you have a motion on section eight?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to approve staff's recommendation with the following changes, that the ordinance will go into effect on July 1st, 2016, and apply for that day forward. Moving forward.
I'll second that motion, so we have a motion and a second. We, we did this in a unique way by going section by section, but this will be the final section to be voted on by this council, then the ordinance, proposed ordinance language will come before this council with the details on which the direct, the policy direction we're given today. I just want to say that it's been a long time coming. This, this started with a committee pointed by me. Rick Romly was the chair of it. We owe a former county attorney, Rick Romly, a huge debt of gratitude, because the ideas that came out of that committee still formed most of the basis of these recommendations that have been put forward today and will be voted on by the, the council at a soon-to-be formal city council meeting. So I just want to publicly say thank you to Rick Romly and the members of the, the Ethics Task Force that was put forward. I owe my colleagues an apology. I made a rookie mistake when I first became mayor and put together that task force. I should have put members of this council on that task force, and if I had done so then, I think we would have passed a, a stronger ethics policy, probably in 2012. But, but because of that mistake, that I will readily admit, it's taken a little longer, and the Public Safety Subcommittee did have a series of meetings, and I want to say thank you to Councilman Nowakowski for your patience in this process as well, because the vetting process through public safety, I think, has led to a better product here today. But this is important, what, what we voted on here today. It's not perfect, there were changes, I think, that Councilman DeCecio and others said they wish in a perfect world they had. In a perfect world, in my perfect world, there would have been some differences here, but that's, that's part of the art of compromise, to get to a, and ultimately a better public policy, I think we do. We did have a problem in the city of Phoenix for many years. We have a highly, I think, I think, an ethical council right now, but that's, that, this is the right time, as a result of that, to move forward with an improved ethics policy, utilizing models that, that other cities around the country have followed. We did have a problem that, with members of this council, for, for the future council, Um, we will now. Uh, that, I think it's a very good thing, the creation of an independent ethics, uh, commission, the courage of this council, the trust that, that, and, and independent ethic commission will do the public good and be honest and fair brokers of, uh, of complaints about, uh, uh, conflict of interest or other, uh, policies, I think it's a very good thing, uh, that, that this council is moving forward, uh, with that. And I think someday, someday, when there is a real problem, I don't think we have one now, but if there ever is a real problem, I think we'll be glad that we put in, um, this new policy, uh, and the independent commission, and the, and the penalties, uh, that we voted on. So I think this is a very strong step in the right direction, and I want to thank again Rick Romly, Councilman Nowakowski, and others who have put a lot of time into this. Um, so there's a motion, there's a second, Councilman Waring, you have a statement or question?
Well, I'm just curious, uh, so, it sounds like maybe you thought of examples where this could have been applied before, because you, you've got 15 years, more or less, uh, observing this council very closely, can you give me one example where this would have gone?
I'm not going to personally do this council, but I'd, I'll mention the one I did before. San Diego had a real problem. The mayor of San Diego, Mayor Philner, um, because of his personal behavior, because of his personal ethics problems, created a huge problem for the City of San Diego, and I think that they wished that they had an eth-, a strong ethics policy that they could rely upon to appropriately censure, penalize, even in, in, of course, my desire was the ability to ru-, remove from office sooner than they did, so they didn't have all of the negative national headlines and questions about, um, you know, how that government was being run. So I don't want to personalize it to this council or this city, but I think you've seen examples, uh, around the country where they wish they had, uh, a, a, a stronger, um, ethics policies.
But he did get removed.
He ultimately got removed through a legal, uh, a, a, a legal process, a threatened litigation process, it was part of a civil lawsuit settlement that so ultimately, uh, removed him, uh, from office. I believe that that council, if they had their druthers, wished they had a strong ethics policy in which that, that could have been facilitated earlier to save them many, many negative headlines and, and, uh, lack of confidence, uh, from the community as a result. That's, if you ask for my question, I'm answering the question.
Well, I mean, I was thinking, because you mentioned, we had, it sounded like you said we had problems in the past, and I was curious what specific problem, in 15 years, there should have been one, if these five people are going to sign up and they're not going to have one case in 15 years, I don't think that's going to be the case, for the count, I, for the reasons that Councilman DeCecio suggested, but, I mean, it seems like in 15 years, there should have been one meritorious case.
Okay, Councilman, I appreciate the, uh-
I mean, I mean, you said that, there's a statement, so I was curious.
The gotcha nature of the question, look, the arguments I've heard today from you would indicate you think we ought to eliminate the current ethics policy, so we have nothing in place, we can't, we can't have a system in which we have an ethics policy but no enforcement mechanism, uh, and so I've, I've listened to-
Well, I am voting for this, so I guess that's-
A long period of time of questions and suggesting, uh, the, the lack of merit of it, and I think, obviously, taking to its logical conclusion, the arguments you've made would suggest we ought to eliminate the current policy, I don't think you want to do that. So, I appreciate the nature of the question, if you want to ask again-
Because I'm, because I'm voting yes, so that's how you know.
Councilman, if you want to ask me again the question, you can ask me again the question, I gave you an answer, if you don't like it, give another shot.
Mayor, point of order, I don't think we have, I don't think there's anything on the floor, so, point of order.
There is a, the, the, yes, there's a motion on Section Eight, there is a second on Section Eight, so we're, we're now-
Okay, my-
But I made comments of a general nature, because it wouldn't have been appropriate earlier in the process, why I was supporting how we've gotten to this point. Councilman Gates, I apologize.
My, no, I don't have a comment, I, I was ready to vote on it, so, apologize, Mayor.
Yeah, no, I, I think we're all ready to vote on it, but-
Think we all are.
Uh, Councilman Waring did ask me a question, I wanted to give an honest-
Well, I was just asking a question based on what you said, so.
Give an honest answer, yes.
Mayor, I just want to say, this sounds very similar to the subcommittee meetings, uh, many of the points that we've just heard you discussing, uh, and the different council members, almost verbatim what we heard in, in one, at least one or more of the subcommittees. So, this thing has been argued back and forth-
Good point.
And it has been in place for many, many years, and I don't think it's ever been an ethics violation, and it's been, unless you're 20 years old, um, I-
(laughing).
I call you on that.
And I'm not on the subcommittee, so this is my first bite at the apple.
All right, so a motion, we have a second. Mike Huckins, I know you were opposed, but one piece, I think that piece has been, um, is not at issue, uh, currently, so I assume your opposition is now eliminated, thank you very much. All right, roll call.
DeCecio?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastore?
Yes.
Waring? Williams? Valenzuela?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes, next item on the agenda is our legislative, um, uh, state legislative update, my, my understanding is there's an omnibus, uh, motion, Vice Mayor.
Yep, thank you, Mayor, uh, going back to Item Two, before we go to the omnibus, I do want to, uh, to bring up Item L for, uh, comments from, uh, Councilman Gates.
Thank you, thank you very much, uh, Mayor, appreciate it. This item is HB 2549 and deals with public construction piping materials, this is a bill that would essentially require every city in the state to consider using, uh, the PCV piping, and, uh, we've spoken with the folks who have been, uh, pushing this forward, and they are willing to actually drop this bill, uh, based upon the understanding that, and she's right here to, uh, correct me if she disagrees, but based upon the understanding that Councilwoman Williams will hold a hearing in the Transportation Infrastructure Subcommittee to discuss this issue. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Councilman Gates. Now, what we'll do is, uh, I'll entertain a, a motion, omnibus motion, and, uh, and the rest of these items will be tabled for the next, uh, legislative, uh, agenda.
Now, can I, before we do that, can I, can I talk to them for a second?
Sure.
Okay, so, so I'm not sure all you guys are aware of what happened last week at the legislature, you may remember the complete fiasco we had with the Roosevelt Row issue, so the folks from Roosevelt Row were not happy with how they got treated at the city, or, uh, switching votes based on inadequate information being provided by staff, so they went to the legislature and they have a bill, uh, it's sponsored by Representative, his name escapes me, tall, thin fellow, Tom, what's his name?
Mitchell. Uh, Mitchell, Representative Mitchell.
Representative Mitchell, and, uh, the chair is Thorpe, Chairman Thorpe, that's who I was thinking of, you're right, Mitchell and Thorpe. So, uh, our lobbyists, I was interested in this bill, I wanted to go down and testify about it. Uh, we got this text at 7:47 PM last Wednesday night, please share with the mayor and council, update an earlier message, we just received word that HB 2240 Municipal Improvement District's formation election will be held for a week and will not be heard tomorrow, the "not" is capitalized, please contact Government Relations, if they have any questions, thank you. I didn't contact Government Relations. I've been in the legislature a long time, it took me probably by 8 o'clock, I knew that the bill was going to be heard, it was going to be heard, so they misinformed you, if you were interested in going down there, you wouldn't have, I'm not saying y'all were, but it was a bill that pertains directly to us, I went down there and saluted Sal DeCecio, wasn't hard to find out that they're holding the bill, or not holding the bill, we went down there, we sat there for about two and a half hours, the League of Cities and Towns lobbyist sat there with us, when the bill came up, she was surprised and had nothing to say, she hadn't had a chance to study it in the two and a half hours that she'd been sitting there, watching the rest of the proceedings. Um, so, when it was over, I called Ed and said, you know, what's going on, you guys are sending out messages saying this thing, uh, isn't going to be heard and so forth, uh, so I expected you guys to at least get a text saying, at the very, since they sent a text to you saying they weren't going to hear it, that at least you'd get a text saying, yes, they did hear it, and it passed, surprise, so I guess you'll have to wait till it gets over to the House to testify against it or sign in against it. I had to actually ask for that text, which irritated me a lot, frankly, it seems like you should have fessed up, this thing was important enough, apparently, uh, we certainly spent a lot of time on it at our council meeting, through no fault of our own, but you guys thought it was important enough to send out a text telling, giving people this timely update, the least you could have done was send out something saying, hey, we completely screwed up, and if you were interested, um, I'm sorry, and going forward, without me having to specifically ask for it. We pay you guys a lot of money to go down there, did you actually talk to Representative Thorpe, Chairman Thorpe, about this, or you just heard through the grapevine that it wasn't going to be heard?
Mayor, Councilmember Waring, um, the mayor of Flagstaff talked to Representative Thorpe, Chairman Thorpe, the night before, and was reported back to all the cities and towns that it was being held, so I take responsibility that we didn't personally call the chairman.
It's your responsibility, that seems fair. Um, I guess I would say this, if you didn't talk to him yourself, you shouldn't be sending those kind of messages, there's no reason for you not to be talking to him yourself, and frankly, having been a chairman myself, I, if I were him, and this text you sent out, that kind of, I could read you the, it's, there's probably no point to it, you get the point, but you sent out a thing basically saying it's his fault, that's how you read it, if you just look at it, it's not his fault, it's your fault, there is no his fault. So, the chairman can do what he wants, and he never told you anything. So, as a former chairman, that irritated me a lot, in case you couldn't tell, and I knew you guys didn't know anything about it, I talked to the mayor, uh, Ruben Alonso, in the mayor's office yesterday about this, they had no idea. So just in the future, you know, we talked a lot today about sort of trust issues, and who's going to say what to who, but sometimes, some of us don't always feel like we get correct information. This is another example, I don't know how many we've had, the Roosevelt Row issue itself when it was here, is another example, where we ask a lot of questions, we ask for a lot of information, and we get it wrong, and this was about as simple as it could be. So if you guys think I just go on and on about this stuff, there is a reason, don't believe everything you hear when you're down here. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Councilman Gallego?
I would just say, having been married to a legislator, he didn't know all the time what bills they were going to hear, and that things do change down there, so I just think we need to be understanding that people try to do the best that they can, but it is quickly moving, and he was not a chairman, so I can't speak to that, but he regularly would not know what bills they were going to hear, and it changed very, very frequently, so I think we all just have to try to do the best that we can to do the right thing, but I don't think there was malicious intent.
Well, it wasn't his role to tell all the other legislators, in that case, what bills were going to be heard, um, and I'm sure he wasn't actively sending out emails, misinforming them on any kind of basis either, so-
I was regularly misinformed about the time we would be having dinner.
(laughing).
And I continue to do that today, when I can never estimate when we will be done with these committee meet-, these council meetings as well.
I think my point is, their professional responsibility is to give us accurate information, um, we have seen all too many times at this council where that hasn't happened, and, uh, it's just frustrating as heck, there's just no other way around it, I'm glad I didn't listen, I'm glad I checked for myself, uh, and Sal as well, so.
I, I appreciate it, I will entertain an omnibus motion for Items D, F, J, M, and O.
Uh, so move, okay. Uh, staff's recommendation to support Items D, F, J, M, and O.
The motion, do we have a second? We do have a second, no further discussion, roll call.
DeCecio? Gallego?
Yes.